Good evening, everyone. We're going to go ahead and call to order the Planning Commission for August 26, 2024. If you'll please call the roll.
Commissioners Borja, Conklin.
Here.
Corona Savagnano, Devlin.
Here.
And Raythal.
Here.
And we do have our quorum with those members present.
If you'll please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you'll please make the announcements for this evening.
Well, the county fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The commission does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Sitting may be limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. To make an in-person public comment, please complete and submit a speaker request form to the clerk. Each individual will be invited to the podium to make a comment. Members of the public may send a written comment, which is distributed to commission members and filed in the record. Contact information is optional and should include the meeting date, an agenda or off-agenda item number to be sent as follows. Email a comment to boardclerk@saccounty.gov or mail a comment to 700 H Street, Suite 2450, Sacramento, California, 95814.
Thank you. That will move us to the contested portion of the agenda this evening. If you'll please call item number one.
Yes, your item number one this evening is PLMP 2023-00087. It's for a Development Plan Review Density Bonus and Incentives Concessions or Waivers and Design Review. And it's located at 3532 Mission Avenue, approximately 375 feet north of the intersection of Whitney Avenue and Mission Avenue in the Carmichael Old Fiddle Farms community. And the environmental document is that it's exempt.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Raythal, County Planning Commissioners. My name is Christian Baltasar. I'm an associate planner with Sacramento County Planning Environmental Review and lead planner for this project. The subject site is a 1.05 acre parcel located at 3532 Mission Avenue in the Carmichael Old Fiddle Farms community. The site is currently vacant and is depicted with the red outline and crosshatch on the imagery on the screen. The project site is within the Mission Oaks Neighborhood Preservation Area, or NPA, and has an underlying mixed zone composed of RD 20 and RD 30. The entitlement request is a Development Plan Review pursuant to the Mission Oaks Neighborhood Preservation Area for the development of non-single-family residential use on the property, a density bonus incentives concessions waivers for qualified housing development as allowed under the Affordable Housing Incentive Program, and a design review to determine substantial compliance with Sacramento County-wide design guidelines. As a refresher on the density bonus and incentives part of the request, the applicant is requesting a 50% density bonus, two incentives, and six waivers, included as Attachment 3 on your hearing packets. It's a list of the requested incentives and waivers, along with the applicant's justification for each item and accompanying images depicting the request. The project was previously heard by the Planning Commission on June 10, 2024. Following staff's presentation, 28 members of the public spoke in opposition, and one member of the public spoke in favor of the project. Comments included concerns regarding increased criminal activity, increased in traffic, pedestrian safety, potential to decrease property values, concerns with loss of privacy given height of structures, and an overall over-concentration of apartments in the area. Following the public comment period, Planning Commission voted to continue the item to a data uncertain for staff to research and provide additional information regarding the following items. The first item was accumulative transportation impacts. Item 2 is potential for on-street parking to be used on-site. Item 3 is the safety of Whitney Avenue and Mission Avenue intersection. Item 4 is the overall state of transportation network, including transit in the project site area. And item 5 is additional analysis of standards that are physically precluding the proposed development and what constitutes the term physically, physical preclusion. My next portion of the presentation is going to be kind of a slide addressing each one of those items and going kind of in-depth in explanation on what staff found for each item. First of those items is the cumulative transportation impacts. The Planning Commission directed staff to analyze cumulative transportation impacts of both Mission Avenue apartment projects, taking into account established and proposed projects surrounding the project site. Staff coordinated with Sacramento County Department of Transportation, or SAC DOT, who prepared a trip generation letter that included both projects. The trip generation letter states that residential projects can be exempt from SEQA, Vehicle Miles Travel Study, or VMT study if the site exists within a VMT-efficient area. Given this project site is within a VMT-efficient area, a VMT analysis for the proposed project was not required. In addition, SAC DOT calculated that both sites combined would generate a total of 670 new daily trips, 71 AM peak trips, and 76 PM peak trips. This is less than the 1,000 new daily trip and 100 new trip during AM and PM peak hours needed to require a traffic study. Along with the traffic generation letter, DOT also provided staff with the data for a traffic count they conducted at the intersection of Mission Avenue and Whitney Avenue on March of 2023. The traffic count concluded that the north leg of Mission Avenue has a total of 2,815 northbound and southbound trips. DOT informed staff that based on the road classifications of a residential collector, this roadway operates at an acceptable level of service. Next item is on-street parking. During the June 10 hearing, the commission inquired as to why on-street parking was not included in the total parking proposed for the site and directed staff to provide additional information on this topic. Upon review of the zoning code, it was determined that visitor parking may be satisfied with on-street parking on the property or on adjacent street frontages at a one-to-one ratio. However, affordable housing projects are not required to provide visitor parking. Given there is no visitor parking requirements for affordable housing projects, on-street parking cannot be used to satisfy off-street parking requirements and have not been included in the total number of parking spaces proposed. While the number of on-street parking spaces cannot be used to satisfy off-street parking requirements, county engineering SIPs, or Site Improvements and Permitting Section, has conditioned the project to require Class A street improvements. These frontage improvements would allow for on-street parking to be available. This exhibit on screen here shows a cross-section illustrating the ultimate right-of-way conditions requested by SIPs. As you can see, road widening would need to occur on Mission, and both project frontages would need to construct Class A improvements, which would include curb, gutter, and sidewalk. Here we have an aerial view of the proposed frontage improvements. As you can see, a total of 11 street parking spaces would be created, four on the west side, and those are shown on screen there, and seven parking spaces on the frontage of the east side project, shown here. Moving on to safety of Mission Avenue and Whitney Avenue intersection. On screen now is a criminal activity heat map that's been prepared for the project site. The map was prepared using the Criminal Activity Tracking Map from the Sacramento County Sheriff's Department website. The map illustrates that project site, which is shown in the blue marker on the center. So that's going to be this blue marker there. Is not an incriminally criminal activity hotspot, indicating that the project site is not considered a high-crime area. For illustration purposes, further to the southwest here, we have a high-crime hot zone. So that's what the area would be shown like if it was a high criminal area. Additionally, during the last hearing, several public commentators raised safety concerns regarding Mission Avenue and the Whitney Avenue intersection. It was stated that the intersection has had many car accidents, and to some it was considered dangerous. Commenters perceived that the proposed project would increase the number of accidents at this intersection. To look into this, staff coordinated with SAC DOT and provided a report of all the car accidents that occurred at the intersection for the past five years. The full report is included as Attachment 18 in your packets. This report concluded there have been a total of 14 car accidents in the last five years at this intersection, seven of which resulted in injuries and zero resulted in fatalities. SAC DOT also looked at the last 12 months of crashes, where it was identified that four incidents had occurred. Based on warrant seven of the Caltrans manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, this is below the number of crashes that are susceptible to correction by a traffic signal in the last 12-month period. Moving on to public transportation network. To address the commission's inquiries regarding public transportation in the area, staff looked at immediate public transportation that serves the area. It was determined that a total of four bus stops are along Mission Avenue within walking distance of the proposed project. That's two northbound stops and two southbound stops. The bus stops are associated with Bus Route 82, which operates Monday through Friday at 30-minute intervals from 5:15 a.m. to 9:15 p.m., and on weekends at one-hour intervals from 7:16 a.m. to 9:16 p.m. Here we have a map outlining, in blue circles, the location of the bus stops near the project sites. Bus 82, the route of Bus 82 includes University and 65th Light Rail Station and the American River College campus, providing riders with routes to access SAC RT's larger transportation During the June 10 hearing, the commission directed staff to provide the definition of the term "physically precluding" to help determine what qualifies as a requested deviation or reduction of standards for waiver purposes. The term "physical preclusion" comes from Government Code Section 65915E when defining the term "waiver." This definition is listed as the first point on the slide. However, the Government Code does not provide a definition for the term "physically precluding." By law, when a statute does not define a term, the term is described its ordinary meaning. The Merriam-Webster Dictionary defines the terms as follows. "The word 'physical' is defined as having material existence or perceptible, especially through the senses, and subject to loss of nature, or of or relating to material things." "Preclusion is defined as to make impossible by necessary consequence, rule out or rule out in advance." Therefore, "physical precluding" in this context means the development standard at issue would tangibly make construction of the requisite density impossible. Planning Environmental Review staff continued to support or continue to recommend approval of this project and have determined that the proposed project remains consistent with the general plan, Carmichael Community Plan and Action Plan, the Mission Oaks NPA, and the zoning code. In person review of the proposal, we have determined that granting the requested incentives, concessions, waivers, or reductions would not have a specific adverse impact upon public health and safety, would not have an adverse impact on historic resources, and/or would not be contrary to state or federal law. The project is compatible with surrounding zoning and land uses and was supported by the DRAK and CPAC. Additionally, there are no significant environmental concerns. Therefore, Planning Environmental Review staff recommends the Planning Commission take the following actions. Recognize the exempt status of the request under Section 2115925, the California Environmental Quality Act. Approve the Development Plan Review. Find the project in substantial compliance with design guidelines. And approve the density bonus and requested incentives, concessions, or waivers for qualified housing development, all subject to findings and conditions. I do want to note that, given the number of public comments that were received relating to traffic, we do have Cameron Chu with SAC DOT present available to answer any questions relating to traffic. I will conclude my presentation at this point. I would also like to note, though, that the applicant team is available in person to answer questions, and I also believe that the applicant team has prepared a presentation that they would like to go over with you all tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baltasar. Questions for staff at this time?
One quick question. Thank you very much, and appreciate the definition of "physically precluding." During the traffic study analysis, was there a study that focused on traffic patterns between 7:30 in the morning and 8:30 in the morning and 2:30 to 3:30 in the afternoon that coincides with the Churchill Elementary School that's located there on the eastern between Marconi and Whitney?
Good evening, Commissioner. This is Cameron Chu with the Department of Transportation. There was actually no traffic study done based on the trip generation calculations. As was referenced earlier, we have thresholds to determine when a traffic study is required. So because the calculation of this project came in below that threshold, no traffic study was required at all.
If you guys could please keep your comments to yourself, we'll have plenty of time for public comment. That would be much appreciated. Other questions for staff at this time? All right. Thank you, Mr. Baltasar. I appreciate all the work that you guys did on tracking down our concerns from the last meeting. At this time, I'd like to invite the applicant up. And we can get you sworn in this evening.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Let's get you sworn in first. So if you would please raise your right hand, any appropriate responses I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give to this commission is the truth, so help you God? And if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
And if you could please state your name for the record and make the statement, I have been sworn.
Dominic Mocovero. I have been sworn.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. Consistent with what Mr. Baltasar said, I have prepared a brief presentation for you on this project, and this will be my first time using this clicker, so I apologize in advance if I flubbed this up at all. I will want to introduce one other member of our team, but I'm happy to interrupt my presentation and swear him in at that time. So I will say I am excited to be back together with you discussing these projects. Since the last meeting, the applicant team has voluntarily taken some time to prepare additional documentation that will speak specifically to the waivers, which were a significant point of our discussion on June 10. Hopefully, that will help provide further clarity regarding the design and function of each of these communities. And in a few minutes, I'll walk you through those diagrams for the 3532 Mission Avenue project. I just wanted to cut on a couple of high-level points before I get into the plan and on your screen. One thing I was remiss to share with the commission and perhaps with the public last time is that the developer and long-term owner of this community is a family developer who owns and manages a variety of properties in the region already and is a longtime developer. I have been told that the intent is to never sell these properties. I know there were some concerns, particularly from Commissioner Conklin, about perhaps these projects being approved and built and then sold, and I want to say here to you today that my client, and at least to my understanding, has never sold any of their holdings in the Sacramento region. So I thought that would be worth sharing. Those are the kind of clients that we prefer to work for at our firm. Second of all, I think this was discussed, but again, I'll just remind you that there will be a professional property management firm operating and managing this property. They are familiar with vetting the income requirements associated with the affordable housing units that will be part of the community, and they're well-respected. In fact, I believe the owner of that property sits on the Carmichael P-Bid Board as well. And again, just briefly to sort of touch on the high-level points of this project, this is 33 units, including four units that will serve families making 50% AMI or below. These 33 units are sited on 1.05 acres of land. The parcel in question has been zoned for three-story multifamily development since the 1980s. And so we believe this is an appropriately designed and thoughtfully designed project that integrates well into the broader community. With that said, a little bit of brief sort of reminder on the project design that you see here on your screen. So 3532 Mission Avenue is... Middle button is the little clicker? Top button? Thank you, Christian. So you'll see here, there are three what are called, we're calling B buildings. These are essentially the same three-story walk-up buildings. The only difference is the one here that fronts out to Mission Avenue does have some slight differences in the exterior design that fronts Mission Avenue, and that's to provide additional articulation and consistent with planning standards. Each of those units has three buildings per floor, and then there is a smaller two-unit-per-floor building over here on the far eastern side of the property. Each of the buildings is separated by a green space shared courtyard that will have seating areas and landscaping that will be a public amenity for the residents of the community. And then, of course, between the farthest east building and the C building, there is a shared basketball court that also doubles as a hammerhead fire truck turnaround space. In addition to the 33 residential units, this project proposes 42 parking spaces. That does not include any parking on the street, as Christian just discussed in his And with that, I'd like to briefly introduce another member of our team. In addition to myself, we have Alan Murphy, who is from Perkins Coie. And Alan will come up and speak briefly about his role on the project before I jump into the next step of my presentation.
Hello, Alan. If you could please raise your right hand in the appropriate responses I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give to the commission is the truth, so help you God? And if you do not swear, do you so affirm?
I do.
Okay. And if you could state your name for the record and make the statement, I have been sworn.
Alan Murphy. I have been sworn.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Alan Murphy with the law firm of Perkins Coie. We appreciate your consideration of the project this evening. Can you hear me fine? Great. Thank you. On August 13, we submitted a letter that you should have received. It's in your packet as augmented after the initial agenda was published. And what we're intending to do tonight is assist the commission in its review, given that state housing law imposes a number of constraints on a commission action. And so we hope having a more complete understanding of these constraints helps facilitate and really streamline the discussion here. We understand there were some questions in this area that came up at the last hearing. And so today, consistent with the letter, I'd like to walk you through the key constraints imposed by state housing law. In brief, state housing law compels approval of the project, and specifically, the project must be approved as designed, including all requested exceptions from development standards. The first key point is that the Housing Accountability Act prohibits disapproval of the project or a reduction in its density. Where a proposed housing development project is consistent with applicable objective standards and criteria, a local agency may not disapprove the project unless it finds an unavoidable, specific adverse impact on public health and safety based on objective, identified, written public health and safety standards. Here, the project was deemed consistent with applicable objective standards within the 30-day window after the application was determined to be complete, and that's by operation of law. No objective identified written public health or safety standards exist that could form the basis for disapproval of the project, and for these reasons, the project must be approved at the proposed density. Second, the state density bonus law compels approval of the project as designed. That includes all requested incentives and concessions and waivers of development standards. As a summary, here's how the density bonus law applies to the project, and you may already know all these details, so forgive me, but just to summarize, the project sets aside prior to the award of a bonus at least 15% of units for very low-income households, and that qualifies the project for three incentives and concessions. In addition to those incentives and concessions, the project also qualifies for an unlimited number of waivers of development standards, and that is based on a separate section of the code that you heard from Christian about a moment ago. So in addition to those, the project, while the project does request two incentives and concessions and multiple waivers or reductions of development standards. As discussed in the expanded staff report you received, as well as in our letter, exceptions to these density bonus law allowances are extremely limited. The courts have, or there actually is a Government Code provision that if a court finds that the refusal to grant a requested waiver of development standards violates the density bonus law, then the court must award the plaintiff reasonable attorney's fees and costs. The courts in the California Department of Housing and Community Development, or HGDE, repeatedly have stated that a qualifying project under the density bonus law must be approved as designed. Projects cannot be redesigned through disapproval of any of the requested waivers of development standards. And HGDE has written the following about this point. Quote, "The courts have made it very clear that if a project qualifies under the density bonus law, and if waivers are needed to physically allow that project to go forward with the incentives and concessions granted, then the waivers must be granted." In a 2023 letter of technical assistance, HGDE accurately stated that, quote, "Appellate courts have established and continue to affirm that local agencies cannot lawfully redesign a qualifying density bonus law project on the theory that if the project were configured differently, it would not need the requested incentives, concessions, and waivers. The agency must consider the project as proposed, inclusive of any requested concessions and waivers." In a notice of violation issued to the city of Encinitas in 2022, HGDE explained that, quote, "Project applicants need not consider various alternatives that might be plausible on the site without concessions, incentives, or waivers. A project that meets the requirement of the density bonus law is entitled to waivers if they are needed, period." The applicant in Encinitas, quote, "provided a reasonable documentation to establish eligibility under the density bonus law, in that it qualified for density bonus and could not build a project as designed without them," unquote. And so for that simple reason, the city in that case was required to waive the development standards at issue, and the city's denial of the project, HGDE determined violated the density bonus law. For the same reasons here, the Planning Commission must approve the project as it currently is designed. The project qualifies for density bonus first, and second, cannot be built without the requested incentives, concessions, and waivers. No exceptions under the density bonus law apply here. And so the project may not be redesigned by denial of any requested waivers of development standards. And then finally, it would be too late to identify any basis to disapprove the project as designed in the unanticipated event the Planning Commission were to consider it. The Housing Accountability Act and the density bonus law identify specific timelines that govern when project applicants must be informed first about any alleged inconsistency of their project with objective standards, and second, any alleged deficiency in the information they have provided to the local agency. We have no reason to believe that the Planning Commission would seek to disapprove the project or to rely on either of these two items as a basis for disapproval, given the county's staff recommendation to approve. But that said, in the unanticipated event, the commission were to consider departing from staff's recommendation. Please note that state law would prevent the commission from disapproving the project as designed based on any alleged inconsistency with objective standards or any alleged deficiency in information provided, as the county did not timely inform the applicant of any shortcomings in these areas. In sum, state housing law obligates the commission to approve the project as designed, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about how state law applies to the project about this analysis. But now, with this legal background in mind, I'd like to turn it back to Dominic to walk through some figures the team voluntarily prepared following the last hearing to kind of help the commission see why each project waiver is needed. As noted, there's no opportunity to seek alternative means of handling these requests, but we did want to be transparent and collegial and provide the commission with the information that was requested to show why the project is designed the way it was and why these waivers are needed to facilitate the project. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alan. Okay, so Commissioners, I'm just going to go ahead and jump right in. I skipped over the two slides that I had at the beginning of my presentation because I learned that they were redundant with Christian's presentation, but can speak to those if there were any questions on those. Those are, again, the street section and the planned view of the street parking and the ultimate right-of-way. All right, hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and proceed. All right, so as discussed, these are the diagrams that we prepared regarding each waiver for the project. As Alan pointed out, the point of the waivers is to allow for the project to seek relief from development and zoning standards, which prohibit the project from achieving the allowed density. This one is pretty straightforward. You will note that the zoning code requires a 15-foot side yard setback. However, to comply with that standard would impact the proposed building footprints as designed. This is why the project has requested the waiver. So ultimately, if you see the setback line that's encroaching upon the building footprint there, that would change the yield for the project. Even just four or five feet can dramatically change the yield in terms of removal of a bedroom and ultimately impacting the geometry of the project. I'll move to the next. So waiver two, this is a slightly more nuanced request. This waiver requests relief from the requirement that all assigned parking be a standard-sized space. The implications for this waiver are somewhat combined with a couple of the waivers that you'll see. Ultimately, the goal here has been to optimize the quality of the design to allow for the achievable yield and also provide as much parking as is possible and provide as nice of a community context for residents as well. This may also, this was a trade-off decision in regards that if we did not elect to take this waiver, we would have been requesting a waiver from open space, which we believe is a more negative way to approach the design in terms of impact to the future residents of the community. This waiver allows us to take items such as transformers, bike parking, and mail kiosks out of the internal courtyards and make them a more pleasant space to be. It also allows us to not have to encroach on the building footprint by complying with these standards. Waiver three, this request has to do with required landscaping adjacent to buildings or walkways. Again, this is connected to waivers two, five, and six. To comply with the standard would have caused encroachment into the building footprint or would have required us to encroach upon the drive aisle, eliminating parking and/or rendering the project completely infeasible. This next standard, this next waiver is in regards to complying with the parking requirements per code. I think this one is pretty straightforward in the sense that it shows the amount of additional parking that would be needed to comply with per code. I actually think that these ratios, which are proposed here, are not the affordable housing ratios, but actually just the standard requirements of parking per county code, so I'll be clear about that. But as you can see, two of the buildings would be significantly impacted... But as you can see, two of the buildings would be significantly impacted. We also wouldn't be able to provide the basketball court and other amenities, as well as that would be a shared parking space. So this would dramatically reduce the unit yield of the project. This next waiver, again, related to two, three, and six. Ultimately, the project as designed requires relief because compliance with the standard would cause encroachment on the footprint of the buildings as well. As you will know, we have sort of tried to find a healthy balance of the different requirements associated with this condition between the parking, the walkway, the landscape strip, and then the buildings. And again, we have striven to optimize the final design of the community to both achieve the required density and also make the project live as nicely as possible. Again, waiver six interrelates with two, three, and five. The project as designed does not comply with the standard when accounting for vehicle overhang. The overhang is an additional two feet beyond the parking space with standard dimensions, and so that is why we request a waiver from that standard. To comply with the overhang would have caused the walkway and then the landscaping to all be pushed down, ultimately encroaching upon the building footprint. This slide didn't render as well as it looked on my computer screen at home, but the intent of this one, there was sort of a gray and blacked-out space where it says required parking and required open space. This diagram is not particularly associated with an individual waiver, but it is meant to illustrate the allowable, buildable area where the project to comply with every single one of the development standards. The reason that we've included this slide is that we feel it's particularly pertinent in the sense that, as discussed already today, the project has the prerogative to build to the allowable density, but density bonus law. Were we to comply with some of these standards, and these diagrams do not account for every single one of these standards, it's just sort of the big ones like open space and parking, the project would likely need to be four stories or taller in order to achieve that density. We considered that when we were starting the design, but we intentionally chose not to go that route because we believed that it would be even less congruent for the neighborhood, and it would not be as good for the project in whole. So that is the reason we've included this diagram. We thought it would be helpful to explain that perspective when we were taking the design approach at the beginning. Finally, you'll see a lovely rendering of the proposed finished project. You'll note, as I forgot to say at the beginning, that the drive aisle was intentionally placed on the northern side of the project in order to create a visual and experience buffer from the one- and two-story project to the north. We have carports covering most of the parking along the north side, providing visual screening as well. And then you'll note that we have selected soft and quiet materials that are consistent in character with the surrounding neighborhood, particularly gable roofs and fiber cement siding. That concludes my presentation for this project. Happy to answer any questions as I'm able.
Thank you, Mr. Wilmer Gavero. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Questions for the applicant team this evening? Mr. Conklin?
Thank you very much for the presentation. And I want to thank your counsel for reading their letter that we had already received and read. Saves me the exercise of reading some of these excerpts, which I appreciate. The phasing of the two projects, are those going to be commenced in tandem, one after the other? Can you explain kind of the timeline for those?
I, to be completely frank with you, Commissioner, we are focused on getting through the planning approval process. So in terms of how construction would be phased, I believe is what your question was in regards to, I don't think that has been deeply considered. Speaking myself personally, I could see one being built and then the other, and using one of the sites for staging, that would make sense to me. But to be completely candid, we haven't gotten to that point yet with the client, and that's because we're very focused on the hurdle in front of us.
Got it. So there's no real guarantee that the second phase would actually move forward?
Oh, our client is eager to get us started on the construction document set and submit for building permit. So I think that, assuming that the projects are approved and we have clearance to submit for building permit, I, my understanding is that we would be starting on both sets simultaneously, and then, yes, likely, it would be a conversation with my client's contractor in terms of which one is most appropriate to start first and how the phasing would be done. I think the general contractor would be very involved in that, but very much intends to build both this project and the next agenda item as well.
And then, could you just remind me again, were, there's several requested waivers, I think a half dozen or so, based upon the, at least the argument that I'm reading in the, in the analysis here, is that the applicant is requesting incentive concession for certain standards that are not financially feasible to accommodate. So I guess my concern is if, if there's a financial instability or if there's financial vulnerability, I'm curious if, you know, with, with, if there's uncertainty about that second phase moving forward and, and making sure that a lot of those, you know, the density ratios are based upon the totality. And so I'm just trying to figure out what happens if the other phase doesn't move forward, since some of the arguments that are being, for the approval of some of these requested waivers is that there's financial vulnerability.
I'll speak to answer your question, and I think Mr. Murphy here has something to add as well. So I will say, Commissioner Conklin, I think that my, my client would proceed with one, if one was approved and one was not. I believe the intent would still be to just build the one, for whatever it's worth. I think that-
I'm sorry. Sorry, that wasn't my question. I'm sorry. It was just more of, there, there's an argument of financial vulnerability or, or sensitivity about some of these one-time costs, and to be requesting a waiver is having, having to do with setbacks and parking and planner boxes and things of that nature. And if the argument is financial vulnerability, it gives me pause and concern about where the status of that second phase, that second project moving forward, while the ratio is, that's being used for the argument for density, is collectively between the two units.
I'll just speak very briefly, and then, Alan, you go ahead. But the incentives and concessions are associated with financial feasibility, and the waivers have more to do with a physical preclusion. But go ahead.
Yeah, and to clarify, so, so historically, there was some reference about financial feasibility in the state law on incentives and concessions. That was removed, and so incentives and, so there may have been some language at points that you may have seen about feasibility, but the only relevant standard related to incentives and concessions in anything financial is whether those incentives concessions result in identifiable and actual cost reductions. And so that's something that developers across the state will, will look at, right, is whether an item would result in cost reductions, and if so, and assuming it meets the other criteria, it can be an incentive and concession. So I think the feasibility point, if you saw references to that related to incentives and concessions, it may have been using an older interpretation of, well, older statutory language, frankly, in the density bonus law. That's actually not one of the items that's in the law now. And then a, just a second point, you'd referenced the two, there really are two separate projects, and the density calculations and how those might interact, and that each density calculation is done separately. So for the project before the commission right now in this item, the project qualifies for density bonus based on how many affordable units in that project is provided. It does not matter at all, for that purpose, whether the second project is ever built. Doesn't matter how many units are in that project, how many affordable units. And then separately, when we get to the second item, that second item is a self-contained density bonus law project as well. So they are entirely self-contained for purposes of the density bonus law.
And several letters have come in, have come in from residents in the nearby community requesting a masonry wall in lieu of a six-foot wooden fence in the back of the property. Is that a concession that the applicant's willing to consider?
I will point out that, in addition to our opposition for that request, the Design Review Advisor Committee also did not agree with that request from the CPAC. It's our personal opinion that the CMU wall would be garish and would also, excuse me, most importantly, would seem like a barrier between these communities and their neighbors, and the point of residential development is for it to integrate and function as a neighborhood. So our personal opinion is that the six-foot wood fence that is required by standing is the correct choice. We would, we would prefer to not build the masonry wall, particularly because we believe it acts and functions as a separator between this parcel and this development and the surrounding uses and neighbors.
Other questions for the applicant team? Commissioner Borja?
Thank you for counsel on the presentation. We reviewed the letter and also looked at other case precedents that is publicly available, based on our Council of Governments, Cal Cities. Counsel, I appreciate you walking through and reading through the excerpts of your letter for both myself and the public. In your preparation and drafting that letter and prior to this case, how many, how many other jurisdictions have successfully challenged the state density bonus law since the changes of the, the most recent amendments made in 2022, in the best of your ability?
Oh, they, I'm not aware of any successful challenges to the density bonus law amendments, no. I mean, it's conceivable there could have been a trial court decision that was not published, and it's not precedential, meaning it has no value outside of that. It's possible there could have been something like that that resulted in unexpected outcome, but I, I'm typically aware of anything like that across the state, and I certainly have not heard of anything.
And maybe from, from your expertise, sir, about how many, how many jurisdictions have tried, or how many projects, or how many proponents or communities have tried challenging certain projects and taking them into court? You know, you mentioned the San Diego Oceanside, Encinitas, there's LA and Shriver, which is another case law that, unfortunately, Commissioner Conklin, it actually set a case back in 2021 that local jurisdictions cannot now ask a pro forma for the financial feasibility, which kind of ties back to your case about financial acuity. About how many cases would you say were actually challenged legally, for your best of your ability?
Yeah, that's a difficult one, because what sometimes happens in the case in Encinitas was that the city or county might disapprove a project, and then it's up to the applicant or a third party to challenge the jurisdiction in court to try to compel approval of the project. And so it's a little hard to say, because there can be times where a city or county might issue a denial, but then there's not a lawsuit, or maybe it's settled or resolved otherwise. So I, I really couldn't hazard a guess in terms of numbers. I know there are times where sometimes denials are issued, and in my honest opinion, I think what sometimes happens is just the state law has changed a lot, right, in recent years? Sometimes jurisdictions don't, just don't have the latest information, or they may not realize the, the, how the various laws combine to really limit discretion that was much broader, you know, 10, 20 years ago. So I, I think that's often what happens, but I'm sorry, I can't give an exact answer to your question.
Thank you. No, I appreciate it, sir. And then on the two cases that you have shared with us via your letter and your presentation, both Encinitas and Oceanside, you mentioned that HCD, that's the State, State Department of Housing and Community Development, have ended up requesting the jurisdiction that denied those projects to essentially, for layman's turn, overturn their decision or found that their, their denial of the project was deemed not following state statute. What ended up happening with those two projects?
I don't know what happened ultimately, and the reason I don't is that HCD has a database of these letters online, so you get the letter, but you don't necessarily get what followed. I mean, typically, what I've seen, just speaking more generally, is that if jurisdictions get either a letter of technical assistance from HCD, which is before a decision on the project, or notice of violation afterwards, typically, they do comply with what HCD provides for, because of course, HCD does have some expansive enforcement authority in the state, and that's been another subject of recent amendments to state housing law.
Okay, understood. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That concludes my questions for now.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioner Dethan?
All right. I think we probably all up here have spent many days looking at cases and, and laws, and so I do appreciate the letter that you sent. I do want to question or talk about a few things here tonight. First off, you mentioned that as far as objective development standards, that staff didn't notice the applicant within 30 days. And I just want to question, you know, is that normally the case? And maybe this is a staff and applicant question, but did you not know that those development standards, was that not included in the original proposal? That those, all those development standards that you were asking for concessions and waivers for, were, were those included in the original application?
I believe, yes, they were, Commissioner.
So we knew, staff doesn't need to tell you that those were not compliant with objective development standards. Those, the applicant knew that they, that those were already not compliant with our objective development standards that are part of our code?
Well, but with the density bonus law, incentives, concessions, and waivers, then the project does ultimately comply under state law. So if, if, for instance, there had been a view on the part of staff that the project somehow was ineligible and that, that it didn't work with those waivers, incentives, concessions, then that would need to have been disclosed in that first 30-day period. Or if insufficient information was provided, then that should have also been provided during the period provided under the, the density bonus law.
So in the commission packet tonight, I'm being asked to approve the density bonus and requested incentive concessions or waivers for a qualified housing development subject to fines and conditions. Are you saying that I can't even really be asked to do that because it's already been done for me? That we have to have these meetings within 30 days of the application?
Well, there are certain exceptions, right? And so there are three that staff walked through, and I didn't go through them for that reason. But for waivers, reductions of development standards, if there'd be a specific adverse impact, again, based on objective, identified, written, public health and safety standards, that could be a basis for denial. If there'd be an adverse impact on property listed on the California Register, or if there, if granting any of these waivers would be contrary to state or federal law, those are the exceptions allowed under state law that would allow the commission to deny a requested waiver. And then an incentive concession could be denied for one additional reason related to not having any identifiable actual cost reductions. But aside from that, there, there is essentially very limited discretion.
The second point I think you made was in, in impact to historic properties, I think, for number two, right?
Yeah, I understand what's in the law, and I'm just questioning the notification period, really, because I think the argument, the legal argument being made was that you didn't get notice from staff within 30 days. But I think what we're being asked is to approve those tonight. So we can leave it at that. We can agree to disagree, unless you have something. But you, everyone was aware within 30 days that development standards were not being met. Is that clear?
Well, with, with the requested concessions, incentives, and waivers, they were being met under state law. So I think, I don't think there was some lack of understanding between the applicant and staff, to my knowledge, about what was being proposed and what was being requested. Maybe if I could make one related point, you had mentioned the legal point we were making. I think even independent of any issue over timing, just substantively, based on the HCD decisions and the case law that I referenced here, the, just, it's, it's become so clear that if a, if a, excuse me, if a waiver is requested to make the project work the way it's designed, it just can't be denied. And so I think, you know, I don't know if that was behind staff's determination, but regardless if it was or not, you know, as Dominic walked through, the way the project's designed, it does need all those waivers, and so there's really no discretion there, again, except in the very limited circumstances I mentioned.
Got it. Just, I'm clear on that. So next, I think really, what my question was last time is between concessions and incentives, which, to me, state law is really written, hey, if you build more affordable housing, we're going to give you more concessions and incentives. So that is incentivizing affordable housing. When I read your letter and looking into Encinitas and Bankers Hill and these other cases, what I'm kind of taking away is the interpretation is that waivers are essentially unlimited, right?
Correct.
And so why would anyone, why would any affordable housing developer want more concessions or incentives? I don't, I don't need any concessions or incentives, because I'm just going to put everything over in this waiver category that I have unlimited numbers of, right? And so what is the, what, state law at that point really wouldn't make sense to encourage affordable housing development. Like, even now, this project has two concessions and incentives, even though three are allowed under that project. You guys actually could have provided less affordable housing by using this waiver language that's there. So to, to me, like- So to me, like, what, I just kind of want to get your opinion on, is there a difference between an incentive and a concession? Because I've heard Mr. Bogavero's interpretation that one's financial and one's physical preclusion. But what is the legal definition? Like, why would the state want to, why would the state limit those if it's all, hey, I can throw everything over in this category, why would the state try to limit them in the first part of the law?
Yeah, I mean, I can't speak to the legislative intent on that particular point, but one point I'll just raise is that sometimes there are items that are not, they don't physically preclude construction, but they certainly reduce costs. So for instance, waivers of, or not waivers, but an incentive and concession to reduce or eliminate a fee, that would be something that almost by definition reduces cost, right? There's an actual cost reduction, but it's not a physical preclusion issue, right? Because it's simply a fee. So that's an example of an item that could be an incentive concession request, but could not actually be a waiver request. So those do come up sometimes. I think the other point is regardless of whether, you know, we all sit here and think it makes sense, the way that state law is designed in terms of the distinction between incentives, concessions, and waivers, there still is a major incentive for developers to include more affordable housing, because the bonus gets significantly bigger with additional affordable housing units. So there is still that strong incentive to include additional affordable units. It may not be, the incentive concession waiver distinction may not be where you see that incentive really come home to roost most. I think that's more in the additional density.
Would you consider setbacks an incentive, a concession, or a waiver?
Well, it could be used as either. I mean, here, it certainly is a waiver, because a setback physically precludes construction if the project designed to have building, you know, a building within that setback, right? So it definitely qualifies as a waiver. It could also absolutely be a concession incentive. So, you know, we could have structured this by including that as a third incentive concession. That's not how it was done, but that would have been an option as well.
If something has, I guess this is my last real question is, is a number of these things, and I appreciate the breakdown on the site plans of, you know, what is physically precluding, but a lot of these had a trade-off there, right? If we didn't do it this way, we would have to do it that way. That, to me, like, by definition, doesn't physically preclude, right? Because there's some other trade-off that's there, right? If you have a trade-off, can you be physically precluded? Like, you could build smaller units, right?
Well, so the real question is whether the project as designed is physically precluded, and so that's what the courts in HCD have spoken to. It's something that the state law itself doesn't expressly get into that level of detail, but in multiple court decisions and HCD letters, it's become very clear that it's the project as designed. So for instance, the first court case to get into this had a project with high ceilings and with other, a number of other amenities, and the challenger there, the plaintiff who didn't like the fact the city had approved the project, raised, well, they could have just had lower ceiling heights, and they wouldn't have to create such a tall building. And the courts absolutely rejected that line of argument for all the various project features that were subject to the density bonus, and the court said, no. The project that includes all of its amenities, features, that's the project that is subject to waiver requests, and that's what has to be approved under the density bonus law. It's not a situation where the project can be modified to try to somehow, you know, fit within the box, essentially, of all these waivers. That's not how the density bonus law works. And that, that line of reasoning taken in that 2011 case was reaffirmed in 2022 out of San Diego, where the court rejected another similar challenge and said, in pretty short order, we've already considered this, and we already handled this in 2011, and said, it's the project before you, in this case, the city, that you, that needs to be approved, and you, the challenger who was suing the city for having approved the project, you had no basis to do that, because the city had to approve the project as it was designed with these various waiver requests.
So let's take this to the extreme then for a second. So zero lot line setbacks, seven-story tall building, massive units that are there, still affordable. I know I probably wouldn't pencil, but you're saying that that could apply for basically a waiver to every development standard we have if the applicant were to propose it like that? That's your legal interpretation?
Right, there's no restriction as long as the project meets the density bonus law requirements in terms of the percentage of affordable units. There is no restriction. It's just one that, you know, you also have to think, as Dominic's pointed out, the reason this project was designed the way it was, was in, of course, to respect the community, but also to make it, to make it a project that works. Because if you have a project that's just, it doesn't fit on the site, then it's going to be harder to attract residents to your project, right? And so as Dominic pointed out, one of the important features in designing this project was to have enough open space, to comply with that open space requirement. It could have been waived, but there was a strong desire to have that open space and not, you know, max out the footprint of the buildings, the envelope, because that ultimately hurts the financial feasibility of the project.
The exceptions would still apply for health and safety standards.
Sure.
That's correct. For written identified public health and safety standards, there would be exceptions. That's right.
I think that's all my questions. Thank you, guys, both.
Thank you.
I'll give you an opportunity after public comment to address any things that come up.
Thank you.
With that, we're going to move on to public comment this evening. We have had a previous public comment on June 10th, where we still remember the concerns of the neighborhood. And so if you're coming here tonight, we would ask for new commentary tonight. You are absolutely welcome to repeat your commentary from June 10th. I have no restrictions on what you say, I'm just saying that we have heard that on June 10th. We're also going to have a second opportunity here tonight to talk about the project across the road, and we'll take public comment at that time. I know many of you have turned in speaker cards for both item one and two tonight, so you'll be called up for both of those items. We are going to limit it to two minutes tonight, so if you could please respect that timeline so we can get everybody in, I've got a, I've got a healthy stack here this evening, so. With that, we're going to go ahead and call up Laney Anderson to start, and Nancy Marcheschi is on deck. And my apologies in advance for the names that I will butcher tonight.
I really practiced hard on three minutes, so I'll do my best with two. I want to just thank you both for your time, all of you commissioners for your time. I know you're working really hard for us. I did email my concerns today, but I also wanted to speak tonight. My concern is about the lack of public transit infrastructure. Commissioner Conklin, you seem to share that same concern, and I wanted to give the board a little bit more information than what was provided in the updated agenda. First, I would like to address the applicant statement from June 10th that said that there were at least six grocery stores within one-half to one mile of this project. The closest grocery store is actually 1.3 miles away, so that was incorrect. These projects, still with the parking on the street, don't provide enough parking with their waiver for this high-density housing with low-income status, and new high-density, low-income housing needs, need to be within one-half mile of what we call a major transit stop, and in this case, we would define it as an intersection where two or more major bus routes with frequency of service interval of 15 minutes or less during the morning or afternoon peak commute periods. In the updated agenda pack that the staff gave to you, there are four stops, but these four stops are on one bus route, bus route 82. Also furthermore, three of the four bus stops are unsheltered, there's no place to sit, and just a sign. And Route 82 goes from American River College to Sac State. So if I lived at this address, I could not use Route 82 to get to my job in Roseville. And I would have to walk, I'd have to have four buses, I would end at Route 25, which then I would walk, walk a mile home. Again, remember, the grocery store is 1.3 miles away. I cannot take Route 82 to get to that grocery store either. I would have to walk a mile, get on Route 25 to go 0.3 miles, and I will continue on number two.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Marcheschi, and then Robert Sanchez is on deck.
Nancy Marcheski, thank you very much for your service. This is incredible that you're doing this for us. We really appreciate it. We've lived in our home for 45 years. I won't repeat everything that I've said, but I disagree with the fuzzy math, the waivers, the incentives. And I have an issue with the process. It seemed like we kind of broke down at the CPAC meeting. It was like there was confusion, what their authority was. We discussed tonight what your authority is. Well, it turns out it's a state law, and it's the interpretation. So I'm a little bit defeated, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, Robert Sanchez, you are up, and Kathy Sanchez, you're on deck.
This is my first time here. I've been busy the last few times that we've had, gathered together, and I live on Ingle Road. I can, I walk to my dentist, which probably will be adjacent to this construction of these units. And so right now, Ingle Road, which I live on, is already a very busy street. Those are the two roads, Ingle Road and Whitney, are the two routes in which these people would be using to travel. And Ingle Road goes to Fair Oaks Boulevard, all the way to Norris, where people will get, catch the freeway on Auburn Boulevard, and it's a very busy street. They, it's, they have speed bumps throughout Ingle Road because of the traffic density. It's a two-lane road, it's not a four-lane road, and the bus does go down on Ingle Road as well. It comes up Whitney, goes north on Mission, and then it goes west on Ingle Road. And so there's already too much traffic on my street. This is going to increase traffic that is already terrible. And on Whitney, the gentleman put a map of the crime in the area, around the area, but it was not in our area where the proposed construction is at. That's because there is high-density structures in those areas where there's crime. I mean, I look at the map and I can see that, Auburn Boulevard and Garfield, Arden Way and Howe, those all have high-density communities, and that's why there's crime. Where there's high density, there's usually crime, and we like not having as much crime in our neighborhood, so that's why we don't want this construction. And then it was pointed out that they're adding on parking on the street, because there's not enough parking for the construction site where people will be living. So just that adjustment shows you there's not room for parking for the tenants that are going to be housing those condominiums. And if, and I guess they can't have two cars per family unit also, I guess, because there's not enough parking.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez, if you could make a closing comment.
Okay, thank you. All right.
All right, next up, we've got Kathy Sanchez and Clyde Reed, you're on deck.
Hi, my husband, I don't need to get this.
Thank you, Kathy. Clyde Reed, you are up, and Juan Quevedo, you are on deck.
Yeah, my name's Clyde Reed. I'm absolutely frustrated by all the exemptions that these guys are talking about, but after listening to these guys up here earlier, I feel absolutely sick to my stomach about this whole thing. Thank you for bringing up the seven stories right there. And that was my whole idea, for these guys to make some extra cash, some extra money for the developer, let's make it five or six stories, let's reduce the parking to 10 spots right there. There's no need for foliage. I mean, we can go on and on like this. I mean, why should we stop right there? This would give them the ability to make some extra money, and especially since we're being railroaded over here, we're being told that this is the way it is. We have no say in this. So in spite of everything that we've talked about before, in spite of all the regulations that was supposed to be there, all that's going to be ignored and thrown away. I realize you guys are in a rock, between a rock and a hard place. I understand that, and I appreciate what you guys are doing. There's 600, almost 700 new trips that are going to be going through here. That's an incredible number of trips that are going to be going through here that's going to be affecting us. If it doesn't pencil out for two stories, then maybe it shouldn't be done. I guess that's my point right here. I think most people here, we're not worried about the foliage, we're not worried about parking spots right there, we're screaming and yelling about the fact that it's three stories right there. We don't want to be looked in on by somebody else right there. We'll be, once anything gets built over there, we'll be good neighbors with them, absolutely, but we'll do our best for that. But we don't like having somebody look in our windows from up on top. They're talking about putting trees up there, but that's going to take 15 to 20 years to grow. That doesn't do us any good for the next 15 or 20 years. This, yeah, maybe it has been zoned for, for three stories, but nothing's ever been built that's three stories tall. Just because, just because it's zoned for that doesn't mean it's right to do it right there. Finance, do, 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 do. I mean, and if they're supposed to be doing this for affordable housing, why don't they just make it all affordable housing, then they can make even more money with that? Or if they want affordable housing, make it senior, senior affordable housing right there, and then that'll help a lot of people right there, help a lot more people right there, and we won't have the fireworks and the noise and everything else going on right there. We don't want three stories. That's the basic bottom line right there. Can't they do something to make it work? Aren't we allowed to have that input there? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. All right, Juan, you are up, and Amber Villegas, you're on deck.
Juan Quevedo?
Juan, yeah.
Okay. Good evening. Good evening, planning commission members of Sacramento County. My name is Juan Quevedo, and good evening, staff. So I'm just, I'm a carpenter from this region of Sacramento, right? I come before you to advocate for the implementation of fair wages and upcoming developments with the projects in our county. These standards, including fair wages, healthcare, accredited apprenticeship, and local hire are essential to ensure the crowd benefits of our residents by prioritizing the well-being of our community and creating opportunities for everyone to thrive. I ask you to consider these standards as better steps towards a more equitable and prosperous future for county of Sacramento. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Quevedo. All right, Amber, you are up, and Victoria Swanson, you're on deck.
Hello, my name is Amber Villegas. I work for the California Department of Transportation. Besides my skepticism of the traffic study, that was done by county, my particular area of expertise is, I am a structural design technician, so I design roadways, barriers and whatnot. My area of concern is the waivers that are being asked for this project. It seems to compromise safety. How would you feel if I designed your roadways without your safety in mind? But I'm also here to speak as a neighbor. I do not want these projects to happen. I'm very concerned about the amount of traffic that's coming through. While the parking, you name it, we, I've lived in this neighborhood for almost like, God, 40 years, and I'm just really asking you to keep the integrity in check here, okay? That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Villegas. All right, Victoria, you are up, and Jeff Delancey, you're on deck.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Victoria Swanson. I was born in Carmichael. As an adult, I have chosen to reside in Carmichael again, and my husband and I own businesses in Carmichael. I want to thank you today for the opportunity to speak. I'd like to address the application for the projects we're speaking about, and the requests for exceptions to our zoning laws for an affordable housing project. While I understand the need for additional housing, including affordable housing, we must carefully consider the broader implications of granting these exceptions. Our zoning laws exist for a reason. They ensure the safety, harmony, and well-being of our communities. The applicant has requested multiple waivers and concessions citing financial and design challenges. However, these exceptions, if granted, could set a dangerous precedent that undermines our community standards. First, reducing side yard setbacks from 15 to just over 10 feet may seem minor, but directly impacts the surrounding properties, particularly the adjacent residential areas. This reduction could result in a significant loss of privacy and sunlight for neighboring homes, ultimately diminishing the quality of life for current residents. The zoning code setback requirement is in place to protect these very interests. Additionally, the deviation from landscaping and walkway standards may seem like a minor adjustment, but it compromises the aesthetics and environmental quality of our community. Green space and proper separation between buildings and parking areas are essential for reducing heat, providing shade, and promoting a welcoming environment. Allowing these waivers would detract from the overall appeal and sustainability of the development. One of the most concerning One of the most concerning aspects of this proposal is the failure to meet the off-street parking standards, which are clearly outlined in our zoning regulations. These standards are designed to ensure that parking and loading facilities adequately serve the majority of traffic generated by the development over time, maintain efficient use of land, and support the viability of businesses while preserving the property values of surrounding neighborhoods. The proposed development falls short of providing sufficient parking spaces to accommodate all vehicles that will be congregated at the site at any given time. This lack of adequate parking will inevitably spill over into the surrounding neighborhood, leading to increased congestion, frustration for residents, and potentially unsafe conditions.
Thank you, Ms. Swanson.
I have more, but I will save it for the second part. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Jeff, you are up, and--
May I concede my time to Victoria?
No, we're not conceding time tonight, so--
So, I don't have a further prepared statement to make. We just feel, I think, as citizens that are, the system is built against us, and it's not really right. We have people that don't even live in our community, that are coming in and, with their exceptions, are able to build buildings that really don't suit Carmichael, they don't suit our neighborhood, and it's a detriment to how citizens feel, taxpayers feel. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Delancey. All right, next up, we've got Izzy Delancey, and on deck, I've got Mundo Velez.
Hi.
Hello.
Okay, I was here last time, so I'm not, try to repeat what I said, but you know, you all asked the planning, the Sack County, to give a better explanation or more in-depth forensic study on traffic. And what I heard today was pretty lame. Seriously, if your children are walking on Whitney, going to school, morning, night, the church, do you know that there's elderly mental care facilities on Mission? There's senior community, Oakmont. My doctor is on Mission. I walk every morning on Mission in Whitney. I do a four-mile route. I think they should really do a better job at the study of traffic for you and for us. Although you all know we don't want the three stories, I think we need a better explanation from the county. If you're going to request that they do a job for you, then they should do it. Other than that, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Delancey. All right, now, we have Mundo, and then on deck, I've got David Higbee.
Oh, okay, thank you. Mundo Velez here, in opposition to this project. And let me start by saying that the presentation that the lawyer made today here makes me believe that we are living on martial law. Let me say that what I have known for the past seven months on this project, no one in our neighborhood is in favor of this project. And let me expand on that. There has been a person who has attended our meetings several times and expressed his position in favor of this project. However, that person does not live in our neighborhood. He lives on Arden, four or five miles away from the project. He also told us one thing, that his mother lives in our neighborhood, and she's opposed to the project. That enables me to tell you that all of the neighborhood is against this project. Let me give you a little bit of the reasons why this project is so drastically dangerous against us. Number one, in terms of the housing needs, this project solves no problems. There are currently, at the very least, 200 vacant units in Carmichael. In addition to that, the problems that we have is not housing availability, it's housing affordability. Otherwise, these vacant houses, these vacant units will be filled. What this project offers is dangerous to our children. Going to school every morning, either way, Whitney or Ingle, where 160, at the least 160 vehicles will be traveling in that 40-feet-wide street. Don't vote for this project. Protect our children. What this project is also offers is a very chaotic living condition, with three stories high to accommodate for the highest density ever proposed in our neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Velez.
I'm asking to allow me one more minute.
I can't. We've got to have time for everybody here tonight. You can comment on the next project, though. Sorry, I have to set a uniform set of rules. All right, next up, we've got David Higbee, and after that, I've got Kristin Miller.
Thank you for your service to the county and the community. From listening to the attorney, it sounds like we're hosed. And what did Shakespeare say about the attorneys? I don't know. I grew up in a time when honesty and integrity were what was expected from you in the community. I don't know about you, but I have a real issue with people who are not honest. And I will tell you, the applicant has not been honest with you. They were not honest with CPAC. On January 25th, at the CPAC meeting, the applicant told the commission that they would be planting nice 50-foot shady trees. They even had an artist surrendering of it. You showed an artist surrendering of it tonight. And when we were here last time, they showed 10- and 15-foot trees being planted, and someday, they'll be 50 feet. Lanning already discussed about the supermarkets. There is a store within a half a block of the project, it's Mission Liquors, and they sell milk, eggs, beanie weenies, lot of lottery tickets, alcohol. But, like she said, 1.6 and 1.3 miles. The applicants represented also express the mass transit. They go by, but they don't take any place. And if you want to, if you're expecting these people that live in these lovely apartments to go do their grocery shopping by walking or taking an RT, I don't think they're going to be walking when it's raining or 110 degrees outside. Honesty, integrity, let's bring it back.
Thank you, Mr. Higbee. All right, Kristin, you are up, and Linda Mercado is on deck.
Hi, my name is Kristin Miller. And thank you again for having this meeting and for allowing us to speak with you. I appreciate your time, and I appreciate all the time that you've put into this. I actually was born here in Sacramento, and my parents lived on Zephyr Way. They bought a house on North Avenue, and when I had the opportunity to buy a house, I bought it in this community. I played on the street that I am raising my children on, and it's a priceless life that my children have. They walk the streets and invite their friends to come to the house so that they can walk the neighborhoods. We have sidewalks, which are rare in Carmichael, and it's been a privilege to be a part of this community. I'm very grateful to be a part of it. I've also handed out leaflets, sharing the information about this proposal, and everyone I've spoken to is very concerned. Everyone's taken an interest and wanted to hear more about it. And I think that's very rare today, when everyone's really too busy for everything else going on in the world. We're in the state of California, where we care about our environment and our neighbors. I bought a car that would take care of the environment. I pay extra for my gas so that it's better refined to protect our environment. Everyone cares about where we live and wants good air. You know, when I stood on my doorstep, the sound when you talk with the neighbors is of birds and maybe some distant cars. On Saturday, late in the evening, 4721 Marconi Avenue had 21 cars parked outside it, and Mission Avenue, 3450, I think it is, had 14 cars parked outside it. That's the Mission Avenue in Whitney. The apartments on the other side of Mission Avenue in Whitney had three cars parked outside, and when I commented on Facebook about that, somebody said that they lived there, and if you parked in the dirt, you'd get a flat tire. So, I think that the established apartments that are already in the area are a concern because they don't have parking, and they didn't receive these exemptions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Linda, you are up, and Kathy Howard, you're on deck.
Thank you, commissioners. Thank you. I'm opposed, along with Mona, our neighborhood association, to these projects due to the negative impact it's going to have to our environment. Secondly, I wanted to reiterate that, along with about 1,500 other property owners, we decided to put down our roots in this area because of the character of the neighborhood, the character of the people, the look of the environment. And I'm asking you today to be the gatekeepers for our neighborhood preservation area and preserve our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Kathy, you are up, and Robert Saunders, you're on deck.
Hi, I've lived here since 1967, and I've, with my friends, we rode bikes down Mission Avenue safely. You can still ride bikes and walk safely. The neighborhood is charming. We have a sense of community and safety. I disagree with both of these projects, on both of these plots. They're inappropriate and unacceptable. It will take down our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howard. All right, Robert, you are up, and Linda Mitchell, you're on deck.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Rathell, for stating things regarding the concerns of our neighbors, because what I heard, I saw beautiful renderings, I saw great colorful maps, and I kept on hearing the word "project, project, project, project," without any care or concern about the actual people that live in that neighborhood, including the children, that a lot of us are very concerned about their safety. This is a long-established neighborhood. There's no existing three-story structures here. All existing structures fit fairly well in the neighborhood and the character of the neighborhood. They fit in as part of the concept of what constitutes a neighborhood, and I know that it was planned as such, because I know the person who created the area that I live in, David lives in, and a few other people live in. It was a family friend. They all fit in as part of that concept, and there's a community there. It's more than just the neighborhood. They are and act like a community, more so than just a bunch of houses and apartments thrown together with people living in them. Additionally, we also be strengthening our communities rather than disrespecting longtime residents by forcing unwelcome, overbuilt project down their throats. Additionally, having two three-story buildings where there are none currently would create an eyesore, not something any planner, builder, developer should ever impose upon an existing community. These two buildings belong somewhere, for sure, along boulevards and large avenues. Richards Boulevard is Franklin Boulevard. I mean, there are tons of places where they would fit in perfectly and actually fulfill a great need in those areas and be close to RT, bus, and light rail lines. Those areas can well accommodate such large projects, and they would fit nicely in the existing environment and help create newness and appeal. These projects have changed in some details since the original public meetings. They've changed with the reduction of the number of low-income units and increase in the number of market value units, the number of parking spaces per unit in the overall complex. One of the things I want to know, how were the developers able to extract all these additional perks, when most similar developments, as was stated often, usually only get three exceptions, et cetera?
Thank you, Mr. Saunders, if you could make your closing comments.
Okay, excuse me?
If you could make your closing comments.
Oh, okay, yeah. We also still are awaiting results of a traffic study, crime study, and EIR report. And it's not a matter of, just because it complies with rules, regs, and codes, to me, it's a matter of courtesy and respect.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please vote no.
Linda, you are up, and Jean Stripling, you're on deck. Linda Mitchell is on deck, or up. Linda Mitchell, yep.
First of all, this project does not belong in our neighborhood. Absolutely not. It doesn't fit. There is, it'll depreciate our homes. There's not one person, not one person, in our community, in all of Cortland Lane, that wants this project to come here. In fact, many of them have their homes up for sale and are ready to leave if this thing happens to us, because it's an eyesore. It's an absolute eyesore. It depreciates the neighborhood and the type of people that will live there, and the beater cars that'll end up on the street and everywhere else. We don't want it in our neighborhood. We don't want those kind of people. They don't belong. Thank you.
All right, Jean Stripling, you are up, and Paul Cummins, you're on deck.
I'm not going to take your time. Everything that I'm against in this project's are, has already been expressed, but I do, the transportation thing is a big issue for me. The safety of the children in the area, that intersection is really, really congested during the school hours, pick up and leave off, so that's what I want to say.
Thank you, Ms. Stripling. Paul Cummins, you are up, and I have Kathy Cook, the Mona president, on deck.
Good evening, thank you, commissioners. Yeah, the first thing I'd like to say is, I have a significant objection with applicant's counsel providing testimony, sworn testimony. I think that's an ethics violation on his part, and he may be subject to sanction. So, I'll get to the points. The successful magician has mastered the art of misdirection. The misdirection in this case is talking about the things that the affordable housing, blah, 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 bonus density, blah, 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 is going to be shoved down your throat. You don't have a choice. However, this is a discretionary action. The misdirection is over here. Don't pay attention to SEQA. This is a discretionary action that triggers SEQA. SEQA is faulty here. The SEQA work that was performed by the Sacramento County was lame, at the very least. I helped author the write-ups by Mona, which I'm sure you have each received. Hopefully, you've read them. There are numerous specific adverse impacts, which we have highlighted. Had we the funds and the time, we would have done probably maybe 200 or 300 pages worth, but we don't have those resources. We've shown you the tip of the iceberg. SEQA, if done correctly, would have brought all of these things to light, the noise, the shading, the traffic. Everything that we brought to your attention would have been brought out by a proper SEQA document, but that didn't happen. Air conditioning noise, all of it, what got a pass here. So, SEQA, you're not voting tonight just on this over here, which is affordable housing, rammed down your throat. You're also voting on SEQA, which hasn't met the right standard yet. So, I would advise you to think well about what the magician doesn't want you to see and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cummins. All right, Kathy Cook, we have the Mona president, so if we could give her five minutes as the representative of a organization.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and thank you for your time and for your careful consideration of this. This is a hearing, and I think you actually are hearing us. You know, we've had this NPA in 40, for 40 years now, and it's to protect and preserve the single-family residential character of the neighborhood. And there is nothing single-family residential about two huge apartment complexes. I don't even call those affordable housing. They're not affordable housing, they're affordable apartments, but the Affordable Housing Act is supposed to be for housing and getting people into home ownership. We have property adjacent to where they want to build this, that won't happen. The developer, it's shovel-ready, it's all planned and ready to go. He wants to put in single-family residential houses, but this project is putting that in danger because he won't be able to sell his single-family homes with a three-story monstrosity peering down on it. And why should they, these people, get all these concessions and waivers? And why won't they even consider making this a two-story project? That's really all we've been asking for, at least. We really don't want apartments. We want single-family homes in our community, and that's what our covenant is with the Sacramento County, and that's what our NPA said. It said, "Single-- It said, "single-family residential." These apartments are not in character with our, and they'll have an adverse effect on our neighborhood. Also, somebody said that we're zoned for three-story. I fail to, I completely disagree with that. I don't know where that comes from because we've had other projects in the past where they've tried to put in three-story buildings. Oakmont of Carmichael, for one, wanted a three-story building, and they were made to put in a two-story, and they complained the same reasons these guys did, that they'd be unprofitable. Well, they're doing just fine the way they are. And in LA Times article on April 29th of 2024, "The City of Redondo Beach, Carson, Torrance, and Whittier, L.A. County Superior Court Judge Ruled That Law Ending Single-Family Home Zoning in California Was Unconstitutional." SB 9 does not provide housing restricted for low-income residents and therefore cannot override state constitutional protections afforded to local zoning practices, and that's a quote from that article. It's interesting. We have a shortage of middle-income housing. That's what our residential neighborhood is, and that's the infill projects that we would gladly support and approve. And if we have to go down to two-story, even that should be like what we have in Cortland, which are condominium units where we're supporting home ownership. That's all the time I need for this, at this point, and thank you for, I'd just like to know, everyone here in the neighborhood who is opposed to this project, could you just stand up for a second? It's pretty amazing, and on short notice, to get this many neighbors in our neighborhood to come out and show our support in opposition to this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Karen Jacobson, you are up, and David Cousins, you're on deck. And if anyone hasn't gotten the chance to address the commission tonight, if you could please fill out a card now because we're getting down to the end of public comment.
Good evening, council members. My name is Karen Jacobson, and I am here on behalf of nine family members, myself, my wife, my sister-in-law, brother-in-law, father-in-law, niece, a five, a seven, and a 10-year-old who live in the neighborhood. I've lived there 39 years, and it is amazing neighborhood. As Ms. Cook said, it is a middle-class neighborhood, but there are a lot of apartments and there is a lot of dense housing. This project must fail at a three-story level, and this homeowners' association worked hard to get Oakmont to realize that years ago, and we're here, back here today, with the same issue about people wanting to put in buildings that do not match the neighborhood. That would be dangerous, and if you know anything about this neighborhood, you'll know that there's five schools within a mile each way. We have Churchill right down the street. We have Whitney just at the other street. We have Cowan. We have Merrilloma. There are kids in this neighborhood, and to have that amount of cars and traffic coming through this neighborhood would be catastrophic failure. It is already busy because when I grew up in Fair Oaks, everybody goes down Ingle to get to the freeway. There is a lot of traffic and a lot of density. So safety is a huge concern, and I think something that you guys really need to take into consideration. This neighborhood also aesthetically is not ready for a three-story building. The density, the parking, if you, my dentist is also on that street, so we have a very popular dentist, and that neighborhood is not ready for a lot of cars coming down there. If you look at it, it's two-lane, it's very rural, it's, again, two stories would be more than that neighborhood can support, but as Ms. Cook said, we do understand that you need to have housing. Again, it was designed affordable. I happen to be an attorney, I've never been here before, I don't know anything about this area practice, but I believe that the misrepresentations and the changes that were made, kind of bait and switch in this, do not justify that you should grant this proposal, and we ask on behalf of this incredible neighborhood of middle-class Americans who, again, are looking to protect what we have, which is not just single-family, but if you look around there, Marconi, just right past the church, there is high-density housing, there's a lot of apartments in the neighborhood, all two-stories, two-story apartments, everything else is single-story, every commercial thing there is single-story, including the Mission Liquors. And again, this neighborhood in that location is not the right fit for this, and I believe that under the laws decided by Ms. Cook and Mr. Cummins, that you can deny this, and we ask you to do so because this would change the dynamics of this incredible neighborhood. My house was built in '59. This place has been around a long time and survived this middle-class America because of the fact that we have pushed for this two-story as a maximum limit, and we believe that the law will support you to do that and ask that you guys grant this. Thank you so very much for your service and for your time this evening to listen to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cummins, or Ms. Jacobson. You're up.
I'm David Cousins, a resident of the neighborhood within about two blocks of the walking distance of the projects involved. My comments will apply to both, and I don't know if I'll be able to stay for the second comment, so I might make this in the 1 minute and 50 seconds that I have left. I first want to mention, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, that residents beyond the 500 radius did not receive adequate and proper notice from the county as we asked and requested at the June 10 meeting. I assume that was an easy request to fulfill. I'm sure county staff know how to make a one-mile radius in addition to a 500-foot radius. That did not happen. That has bearing on why I have limited comments to make because we didn't have time to prayer as the applicant's staff and attorney did. First, there was also a lack of required signage on this east property. The sign that announces a notice of development project has been down since June. In my recollection, I have photographs with dates to show anyone who wants to see it, and I will make an appointment with planning staff and show this evidence. The sign, as I checked this morning and this afternoon, is still down. It's never been replaced. I don't know who's responsible for the sign, but I don't think it's the neighbors and the county or the applicant should be concerned about providing adequate notice to people who drive up and down the street. County staff made an error in statement, and I've been a county staff, and so I appreciate their work as civil servants. They may do an excellent job, but if they make a mistake, a error of fact, then it should be brought to the attention. Now, I've spoken with Mr. Brofessar, and I find him very friendly and responsive, but at the June 10 planning commission meeting, he stated there were no active complaints or violations at the west side, and I mention it now, but it's an example that if a planning commissioner--
If you could, please make your closing comments.
--a planning staff makes a statement, then they should be sworn in as the, telling the truth, as the applicant's staff. I will continue if I have the time to--
You're out of time, Mr. Cousins.
I'll come back for the next hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, going once, going twice. Anyone that didn't get a chance to address the commission? No, unfortunately, we have a set time for all because then I'd have to invite everyone back up for another couple minutes, so.
I turned in my card, but you haven't called my name.
I haven't called your name?
No.
Go ahead and come on up. We have one other person that wants to speak, too.
My name is Marion Davis, and I live in Cortland Lane. I spoke last meeting. I'm putting my house up for sale. It will hit MSF tomorrow, and I know that I will not get the value out of my home because of this project. It sickens me. I have lived in Carmichael since 1955. This is not the city I remember. Carmichael is not the little community I remember. It is changing. There's so much crime now. I walk down that street every morning to the park. The traffic is terrible. There should be speed bumps there. Trucks bouncing off the, contractors' trucks mounting off the wall, things falling off, you're walking, it's going to hit me. Every morning, my friend and I do this. I can't imagine what this project is going to do to the community. It's probably going to take them at least a year to build it. Try and live with that noise, that filth, that dirt, that pollution that is going to be parking next to the window that I am going to be selling because it's going to be coming up to my bedroom less than 10 feet away from my bed. It sickens me, and I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry that you are put in this position to make a decision for somebody who is making money off of eight little rooms for poor people who can't afford to buy affordable homes, housing, not apartments, homes. That's what we need in California, is affordable housing, homes for people, not apartments, and not laws that hide the truth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. I wanted to speak tonight out of some grave concerns that I have for our local government. The presentation that the attorney gave tonight was either his opinion or his interpretation of state law. If any part of that is true, then what good is it to have neighborhood associations? What good is it to have a Neighborhood Protective Act? What good is it to have a planning commission like yours if the state takes precedent over all of those and literally takes away your authority to determine whether or not such as these apartments can be established? It is a form of government that leaves us all in awe. It is the result of an imbalanced state government, and we need to start at the top in our promotions and our protestations. Thank you.
Did I miss anyone else? All right, with that, we're going to go ahead and close public comment, and I'll invite the applicant team to come back up and address anything that you'd like to address this evening. Okay. All right, with that, we will move on to deliberation this evening. Staff, any comments that you would like to address from public comment?
Thank you, Chair Rathell. Just a couple of remarks. I heard a couple of folks in the public comments specify or state, rather, a fair, or at least their perspective as it relates to the Mission Oaks NPA, the ordinance, that is the requirement, the prompting of these projects to come to the commission. And this kind of speaks to, you know, what the state requirements are versus what the local requirements are, and I think it's in the June 10 staff report, but I'll reiterate what the NPA has to say. What it says is that the property that is the subject of the NPA, Neighborhood Preservation Area Ordinance, shall not be utilized for any use other than single-family residential use or the uses existing at the date of adoption of this ordinance unless development plans for a proposed change in use have been approved by the Project Planning Commission as provided herein. That is the reason these projects are here. The other piece I want to mention is the intent language. I think some of the speakers mentioned this. It is the intent, or, excuse me, it is the purpose of the Board of Supervisors in adopting this NPA ordinance to preserve and protect the existing single-family residential neighborhoods described in this section from further encroachment of commercial and institutional use. It does not say to protect the single-family residential from other multifamily residential use. I just want to make those clarifications. And I would also say that these properties have been zoned RD 20 and RD 30 for a number of decades, so that zoning does allow three-story resident, multifamily residential uses.
Cameron Shute, Department of Transportation. I did hear a lot of concerns about traffic congestion and traffic safety on the roadways. It may not be exactly germane to this application, but I did want to add, just for the Commissioner's benefit, that DOT is actively pursuing grant opportunities on Whitney Avenue. We're going to be looking at traffic calming opportunities, pedestrian bicycle improvements. We do have some active grant applications in right now to look at Whitney outside of this project. Yeah, and just for the traffic study alone, so as far as the school traffic goes, we are aware as well of the queuing and congestion during school hours, but our specific traffic study standards are based on the AM and PM peak commute hours. And so the decision not to require a traffic study was just based on the project's trip generation criteria during those peak hours.
Just for clarification on that, the AM and PM peak hours are concurrent with school drop-off and pickup? Because I think the PM peak hour probably is, I would think it would not be.
Correct, yeah, the PM, the PM peak hours typically between 4:00 and 6:00 p.m., whereas the school drop-offs are earlier in the afternoon, but the AM would be the same.
The AM is the same concurrent time.
When we're scoping a traffic study, we have to use objective criteria, which is basically the IT trip generation manual calculations for the AM and PM peak hour and simply a yes or no whether they're above or below a threshold.
Understood. Any other staff response to public comment or clarifications? All right, we will move on to deliberation. Commissioner Conklin, you want to kick us off this evening?
Sure. Well, I want to thank staff's presentation and also the public comment. You know, I live between Marconi and Whitney, familiar with the area and actually drive by this area every day. And so I'm intimately familiar with the logistics, and I've been down the street and I can appreciate a lot of the concerns that have been raised. The, I think the project application, you know, it's a beautiful building, a beautiful rendition, but I just think it's in the wrong location. And I think that, you know, if the applicants had a similar project being proposed in their backyard, they would be opposed to it as well. You know, I am a proponent of the built environment. I'm an unapologetic supporter of developed communities, and I believe that we need to build more, and I think the building helps encourage economic development, but we have a state law that's been recently adopted by state representatives that assert local control and assert local decision-making. And, you know, I, I think that is probably a matter of time where these, we're going to have statutes that are going to be codified that will deem approve these types of projects and completely do away with even just making this a ministerial and not run through a decision-making body. That being said, I take unbridge to the council's lecturing on state law. We have our own counsel, a brilliant one, by the way, who has provided us a tremendous amount of detail around this area of law. We have, we have accumulatively decades, I've spent 25 years in the state legislature, I understand it intimately well, and I take offense to the tone of the letter, telling what this body can and can't do. I'm going to pause there.
Thank you, Commissioner Conklin. Commissioner Borja, comments this evening? Or any questions? Or any questions?
Quite a tough act to follow, Commissioner Conklin. Really appreciate your commitment to your community. And it really does reflect to the fact that you care about your district and the neighborhood that you represent, and I'm sure all of Sacramento County. I think what I'm having quite a challenge here, and I tried to listen and tried to take notes of almost 20 or 25 speakers that we've received. And I keep hearing a lot of similar themes. You know, this is what we want. I've been here for a long time. It's an eyesore. It's aesthetics, it's inconvenience. Just to also reflect back on the language that our good counsel, Mr. Burke, had mentioned to us and have counseled us. We, as a body, can only determine if we would have to reject a waiver reduction if it has a specific adverse impact upon health, safety, in which there's no mitigation available. Specific adverse impact means significant, quantifiable, to reckon unavoidable, impact based on objective, identified written, public health or safety standards, policies, or conditions. And I apologize because I do not live in that community. I live in Vineyard. There's a three-story Vineyard apartment that also has a housing density bonus that was provided and applied for years before I got there. And I live over a decade in my community already in a two-story family building with a three-story family apartment just down the street. It's going to be really difficult for me at this specific time to look at what is provided to me in the data and quantify an eyesoreness, aesthetics, or wants of community members. And I do feel for all of the folks here and the families and the generations that have already lived in this community and have voiced very strongly their opinions against the project. But I am a little bit concerned that there is precedence already set by law and other jurisdictions that have tried to challenge the numerous iterations of state housing law, which you, Commissioner Conklin, have well put that, you know, unfortunately usurps or overtakes the ability of our commission or governing body in the local level to be able to impact or at least impede or challenge projects that utilize the state bonus density law as well as the Affordable Housing Act in California. And so, you know, I am concerned that, and I mentioned this before, that the thresholds about public safety, specifically in traffic, it's a little bit too high that we sometimes are unable to actually take a full look at a traffic study in a corner that has a lot of different impediments. The traffic count that was provided back in 2023, I think, looked at two different instances, one on a Thursday, one on a Wednesday. And then there's a one-hour count. I would have really liked to have, you know, specific scenarios in which there could be quantifiable potential health impacts that could have been observed had there been increases in vehicular and people traffic during those corners, specifically looking at school time as well as the times when the places of worship were available. However, we don't have that information. And with the absence of that information, I'm a little bit torn at this very exact moment as commissioners to say that I have the quantifiable data to be able to say that, hey, this would have a specific adverse impact. And not to say that the emotions or the feelings of the public here are not well met, trust me, they are. But there's a lot of challenges, emotions, and we have to also come up with facts that would, you know, provide supporting evidence as to why we're opposing or denying a certain bonus or a certain waiver. And so I'm going to pause there. Welcome any input from the rest of the commissioners. But I'm really, I think I'm at a little bit of a loss because we are only seeing certain information and data on the analysis that says that, no, there will not be an adversarial impact that guides our ability to make the decision at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Borja. Commissioner Devon?
Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight. I, too, I guess, put myself a little bit in camp with my fellow commissioner over here. Definitely seeing the pieces that just don't quite fit when kind of looking at it in the context of the neighborhood. The three stories into the backyards. Like, I understand so much of the concern so very clearly. I guess the piece that I'm missing is that quantifiable piece. And I'm just going to kind of leave it, leave it at that.
Thank you, Commissioner. So I think I'll start with, I appreciate your comments, and I appreciate the advice from counsel. I also, you know, I do appreciate all legal opinions. And I'd just like to go on the record and say I am not an attorney. These are, at the end of the day, we don't sit here as attorneys or judges. We're sitting here as volunteer planning commissioners to try to make good decisions for our communities and the county. And state law in this case is way overreaching. It is, it's overreaching. And to me, you know, maybe if I was an attorney, I'd understand it better. It's unclear. And when I look at this, my main concern, as it was last time, is we're, with the approach of unlimited waivers for affordable housing, will I even have any design standards? We're just going to zone something RD 30 and say we don't have any, we don't have any input whatsoever. We'll just throw out the whole book of design standards because it doesn't matter anymore because there's unlimited waivers. All you got to do is provide, I don't know what the minimum is on a density bonus law. I could look in my charts that are probably in here seven times, but it's relatively low. To do that, this project would get three concessions. And if it came here with three concessions or incentives, I would say, to me, the law would be more clear. When you start adding on unlimited waivers, it's just like opening the door for, it's just opening the door for, build whatever you want. And I don't agree with that. I don't think that was the intent of state law. And if it was, I'd rather a judge tell me that than me try to assume that here in a public hearing. That being said, my concern is, so you take away all the waivers, and you look at this project, and you say there's three incentives. And the neighbors' concerns are height setbacks and parking. And so we end up with denying some aesthetic issues that the neighbors couldn't care less about, I'm guessing. This is, you know, the proximity to parking to the buildings and three feet of green space. And so we get rid of those sort of smaller things, right? And my concern is, is you guys still end up with the same project. And that's what, I don't see really a way out of that. I think you probably just end up with some better things on site. So that's my concern of where we end up. And I think this one's probably going to get decided above my pay grade anyway. Let's be honest. I just want to really get on the record of what my concerns are. And we'd love to see cities and counties pushing hard back against the loss of local control for our communities. So I will ask a couple of pointed questions to staff from public comment. There was one mention of the necessity of public housing to be within a certain area of a major transit stop. I'm just looking for clarification on that. I know we're in proximity relatively to a number of traffic stops, or transit stops.
So, thank you, Commissioner, or Chair, excuse me, Rethel. Todd Smith, Planning Director. There are requirements from Sacramento Housing and Development Agency for those projects that are funded through SHRA to have a certain proximity to not just transit, but other amenities like grocery stores, libraries, parks, et cetera. This project, as far as I know, is not receiving funding from SHRA. But that's a little bit of a nuance at this point.
So there's no requirement for density bonus law to be within a certain distance, to be used within a certain distance of transit stops?
As far as I know, that's correct.
Counsel?
I thought it was one of the options.
Kimberly Gutierrez, Senior Planner with Planning and Environmental Review. I believe that language comes from our general plan, which is LU 32, talks about proximity to transit stops, particularly the 15-minute headways. And I believe that is for transit-oriented development sites, not necessarily medium-high-density residential zoned properties.
Chair Rethel, did you say waivers or incentives or concessions relative to transit? Or did you make any?
I was just looking.
Were you specific in your question?
Yeah, I was looking for use of density bonus law or use of incentives/concessions related to being in proximity to a traffic stop. I'm not aware of any. I just wanted to bring that up.
So there is a provision in, let me scroll up. It's hard to read government code. Maybe that's an obvious statement. There can be up to five incentives or concessions if the project is located within a half-mile of a major transit stop or is located in a very low-vehicle travel area in a designated county. But this project is not receiving five.
Got it. And then I guess my other question is, is there any specific, you know, proximity to school? Multiple public comments about proximity to school and traffic. And I'm just going to ask you guys if there are safety concerns with this project or safety concerns with other higher-traffic projects that are related to proximity to school? Is there any difference in analysis that you do related to safety? Like, are there crosswalks there? Are there lights? That sort of analysis that would go into kind of an environmental health and safety approach to traffic concerns?
Yeah, so we do do a safety review, and projects come in. And the question did come up on this project specifically about the crash rate. So we did look at the accident rate around this area. But the Traffic Engineering Department within the DOT determined that there was not enough crash data to support installing a traffic signal at Mission and Whitney at this time. As complaints do come in or requests for additional marked crosswalks come in, we do evaluate those requests through the Traffic Engineering Department. And if additional crosswalks or markings or signs are warranted, then we'll go out and install those. But that's typically separate from a development application unless there's a specific nexus that we can tie a development to a specific need.
Thank you. All right, we'll pause there. And if anyone has a motion to kind of move the debate forward, I'm happy to entertain a motion and give you guys a chance to weigh in on that motion. All right. Thank you, guys, for putting me in the hot seat. I knew I should have let the vice chair run this meeting tonight. So I think I'm going to need some, yeah, I guess I'm really at a loss for this one because, as I mentioned, I don't know if we're just giving false hope on this project, right? At the end of the day, the zoning is, sorry, is this the RD 20 or the RD 30 site we're talking about first? Just for my own clarification, because I thought I had it right, but I just want to make sure.
This is the RD 20 site, but there is a small sliver of RD 30.
Got it. So I, you know, are we just giving false hope with it is really my concern. Looking for ways to reject it, my only thought is that it really, my holdup is that the waivers are unlimited. And so my thought would be that my only way to really hold back would be to prove it without the waivers.
I think that would be a denial. I think the applicant would see it that way. It's part of the project. It makes the project, this project, what it is.
And so would that be grounds for denial?
You can deny the concessions, the incentives, or the waivers if, and there's that familiar language, there is evidence of quantifiable adverse impact based on an objective public health or safety standard.
How about they're just not physically precluded? Because to me, that's really the issue. I don't see a physical preclusion, and I see that as a separate section of the law, which, there's one being that they fit into that category, right? They even fit in to be in a waiver, right? In this case, they're just not even waivers. They're not physically precluded. That's my real argument here, the idea that.
But you see them as trade-offs?
Absolutely.
The case, your stronger, your stronger approach is to find the health or safety impact, the more defensible approach.
Got it. So feel free to weigh in on, feel free to weigh in whenever you'd like, Commissioner Conklin. To me, the health and safety approach is traffic-related. And the idea, I think that may be the only health and safety approach that I see is a traffic-related one.
My only rebuttal to that would be that the county didn't inform the applicant in the window of time. I mean, statutorily, it's clear. I mean, if we deny, and counsel correct me if I'm wrong, which, I mean, it would, there'd be a denial. It'd be adjudicated, presumably. And then the county would, and at least the holding of the court case would be towards the, yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
There's a lot of things going on. And first of all, I don't know what the split is right now, right here. That'll determine some things, and you may not even need to make findings and find a quantifiable impact or an objective standard. But this will need to go through. If you deny it or, either way, approval, denial, it's probably going to get appealed to our board, either way. And that hearing will be de novo. That means it starts all over again. They'll be aware of what your decision was, your rationale. But it's de novo. They make their own new decision based on their own review of the materials. Only after that does it go to court. So, but for right now, I mean, and you guys, I don't need to put you on the spot or anything, but just a couple of reminders on how your rules work. If it's a 2-2 tie, the zoning code sends it to the board automatically without an appeal. I'm 99% sure that's right, and I'm going to double-check it. But I believe that is correct. So just, I don't know where, really don't know where you guys are on this right now. But you'll need a second if you were going to make a motion. I don't know if you're going to get that second yet. I don't know if you're gonna get that second yet. So those are, you know, still kind of up in the air. But yeah, if the motion is to deny, you're gonna have to make findings, and you're gonna have to identify that, that quantifiable impact, whatever area it might be in, and you're gonna have to identify what that objective standard is. And there's a lot of written material submitted, you know, so you can draw from that potentially. But you gotta have evidence.
So if it's 2-2, then it goes directly to the board?
Yeah. I don't know if you guys can pull up the, I have the code section.
I do, too.
It's 6.1, 6.1.3. E.
Correct.
Yeah.
So what that says, do you have it in front of you, or I'll just read it?
I have my note. I don't have the...
Okay, so the code section says, "If a vote of the members of the planning commission results in a 2-2 tie vote, the matter shall be referred to the Board of Supervisors without a recommendation for a public hearing."
Right. And no appeal would be required.
Commissioner Borja will entertain a motion. If you feel strongly.
I don't feel strongly to put a motion at this time. I would, I would say, though, in all honesty, I really do want to hearken back to Counsel Burke's suggestion that we need to have a determinate or quantifiable basis if we were to move forward or reject the project. And having worked in transportation, the package that they provided are the things that I would have looked at. Crash data, STIRS data, potentially any emergency room applications or any bikeway, roadway, fatalities, injuries, both on vehicular, non-vehicular, and pedestrian traffic, active transportation data. I think they had provided things like air quality mitigation already, and so those are just things that, and I'm not attorney by trade, but anybody can, can just counter against if they've already provided a traffic count for two different days, the crash data as well as the available transit information. And again, I'm not trying to negate the county staff. I think they provided us with information. However, at this time, I don't believe I have ample information that would contradict the information that they have provided.
I guess where I was going was I thought you were leaning toward a staff recommendation. But are you not leaning toward a staff recommendation on this one?
Okay, I will, I will throw the staff recommendation and just us a vote so that we can get a vote started.
Okay.
That's a motion?
Yeah, I will, I will motion just to get the vote started. Staff recommendation.
Okay. And do we have a second?
I will go ahead and, I guess, second that in the interest of procedural justice here.
Yep. So I guess we can talk this one out because that would save the trouble of appealing from anyone, right? That goes to the Board of Supervisors. And it does, I think the concerns are, are there with the project, but it also gives more time to put that together, right? For the Board of Supervisors to consider concerns with the project.
Sure, yeah. It would be a couple of months or something probably before, whether it's an appeal hearing or an automatic hearing, it'll be a couple of months.
Either that, or if we wanted to come up tonight with a motion to deny, we would need to have findings this evening. I know before we have tabled things or continued things in order to draft up those findings.
Yeah, we're not gonna continue now. Now we have this other background issue of how many hearings can we have? And how many hearings have we had?
Sure.
And the applicants have taken the position that, well, they think that we're actually, well, let's put it this way, I'm gonna have you guys make a decision, or one way or the other, get it to the board.
Sure.
Tonight. So no, no continuances for the, no, no additional continuance for the planning commission.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on the table for a staff recommendation, which would be...
Yeah, that means approval.
Yeah, which would be approval of the project in its current form.
Yeah.
Please call the roll.
Commissioners Borja.
Yes.
Conklin.
Abstain.
Devlin.
Aye.
And Rathal.
No.
And the motion fails? Doesn't it fail, Devs?
That, throw another curveball into our procedures and policies tonight.
Yeah, your, your abstention does throw a curveball. Because is that a tie? That's a new one. Technically, it's not a tie. The motion fails. That's an effective denial. Unless, yeah, unless there's a, there's a reconsideration, you know, there's a, there's the option for a motion for reconsideration, but, so the motion to approve fails for lack of three. It's not, it's not a tie, so I'm going to call it an effective denial. So that, that is gonna require an appeal. 10 days.
And does anyone have a motion for reconsideration?
It can't, well, it can't come from either of us.
Reconsideration request.
All right. So a motion to reconsider?
I don't know. So why?
To go to the...
What's the, the request to reconsider? This is beyond my parliamentary procedure skills here.
So this, we're preventing the board from being able to take action?
No, it's gonna be appealed.
Gonna go to the board.
Okay, okay, then I'm good.
I'm in.
That concludes item number one this evening. Please call item number two.
So your item number two this evening is PLMP 2023 00089. It is for a development plan review, density bonus and incentives, concessions or waivers, and design review. And it is located at 3537 Mission Avenue, approximately 428 feet north of the intersection of Whitney Avenue and Mission Avenue in the Arden Arcade community, and the environmental document is exempt.
Thank you.
Commissioner, or Chair Rathal, we do have two options for presentation tonight. We have prepared a presentation that covers all the details of this project and then also covers all the additional items that you requested that you have heard in the past presentation. So we can go through that whole entire thing, or we can just cover the project details for this project since you have not heard that before.
Yeah, let's go with the abbreviated version. Because we've, whatever we've seen tonight is great.
Correct, yes. Thank you.
And if, yeah, if you're gonna have conversations, could you go out into the lobby, please, so we can hold the hearing on the second item?
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Chair Rathal and County Planning Commissioners. Once again, Christian Balthazar, Associate Planner with Sacramento County Planning and Environmental Review and Lead Planner for this project. The subject site is located on a 1.6-acre parcel at 3537 Mission Avenue in the Arden Arcade community. The site is depicted with a red outline and crosshatch at the arrow imagery to the right, and the subject site is currently developed with two single-family dwellings which are proposed for removal. The project site is within the Mission Oaks MPA, a neighborhood preservation area with an underlying zone of RD 20. Properties on this particular stretch of Mission are predominantly commercial uses, commercial office uses towards the intersection of Mission and Angle Road and higher-density residential near the intersection of Mission and Whitney Avenue. However, the immediate surrounding area is developed with general office uses to the north, single-family use to the south, condominium community and vacant land to the east, and single-family residential to the west. The entitlements requested, similar to the previous product, are a development plan review pursuant to the Mission Oaks MPA for the development of non-single-family residential use of property, density bonus and incentives, concessions, or waivers for qualified housing development as allowed under the Affordable Housing Incentive Program, and a design review to determine substantial compliance with Sacramento County Wide Design Guidelines. To elaborate on the request for density bonus and incentive part of the request, the applicant is requesting, once again, a 50% density bonus, two incentives, and four waivers. Included is attachment three of your hearing packet is a list of the requested incentives and waivers, along with the applicant's justification from this item, and as previously shown on the other project, they're also accompanying images depicting the justification for those requests. Additionally, attachment four of your packets contains a breakdown of the density bonus and incentives calculations for this project. Throughout my presentation, I'll be pointing out the areas of the site for which an incentive or waiver is being requested. Here is the proposed site plan for the project, which consists of the construction of a three-story building to accommodate a total of 48 units. Five of those units are proposed to be very-low-income units. One of the incentives being requested is for multi-family design standard, which states that buildings shall be designed to offset windows between facing elevations. There are some areas where the proposed building, where the standard's not met, particularly that's gonna be in the center area, where you have buildings or units to the south and to the north facing the courtyard, you would have windows that would be looking or aligned with one another. Along with the proposed building, a parking lot consisting of 64 parking spaces is proposed for both tenant and visitor use. Tuck-under parking is proposed on the southern side of the building, and that is shown on the site plan right down here. So the first floor would be tuck-under parking. There are also two waivers being requested that relate to parking for the site, and that would be standard parking stall sizing, as well as a total of, the total number of parking spaces on-site. The site will continue to be accessed off of Mission Avenue, and a six-foot-tall wooden fence is also proposed as a perimeter fencing for the northwest and south. There is also an entry grate proposed on the southeastern corner down here, which would be security fencing for the site. The third waiver being requested is a rear yard setback requirement. Zoning call, the zoning code calls for a 75-foot rear yard setback. As proposed to the west, there's a 56-foot rear yard setback proposed, and that is also shown right here, that you're gonna get your distance of 56 feet from that western property. On screen now, we have the proposed landscape plants. The project proposes street-frontage landscape planters with street trees on Mission Avenue and parking lot planters with shade trees to meet the parking lot shading standards. A picnic table and barbecue with benches are also proposed as a common-area courtyard in the center of the map, and this is shown with the enlarged image to the right. The last incentive being requested related to multi-family design standards, which states all units adjacent to common open spaces shall have a kitchen, living room, or bedroom that provides windows overlooking such spaces. There are instances, in this case, the buildings that are gonna be directly to the east side of the courtyard, so some of these units here would not have windows that would be facing or overlooking that courtyard area. It was determined early in the process that adding such windows to that side would add additional privacy concerns to the, to the residents within those units. And the last waiver being requested also pertains to landscapes standards, in this case zoning code section 524B3C, which calls for a minimum of seven-foot-wide continuous landscape planter, which is required for all multi-family residential uses in all cases. As you can see from the landscape plans, the applicant is providing a seven-foot landscape planter, which is proposed on the northwest and south sides. However, in the parking spaces to south and west, there are no wheel stops that are preventing these, that are preventing, that would prevent vehicle overhang, and so therefore the waiver is being requested. On screen now are the ground floor, floor plans for the building. As previously mentioned, tuck-under parking is proposed on the south side of the building. And we also have the upper floor, floor plans, which would be the same for the second and third floors. Do like to note that there is a unit mix ratio of one, two, and three-bedroom units proposed for the site as well. On screen here, we have the east and south elevations for the building. The proposed height of the building from floor level to peak is 34.33 feet. And we also have the elevations for the north and west elevations of the building. And as previously mentioned, the building would be three stories and would accommodate 48 units total. On screen now, we have two sideline exhibit. This exhibit is depicting the location of the viewpoint of the next exhibit or slide, which is a person standing on the third-floor balcony on the southern side of the building closest to the single-family residential. So just want to point out that the area that's shown here is the viewpoint of the next slide that we're about to see. So that is the viewpoint of a person standing on the third-floor balcony right up here. There are, there are a few things that are being depicted at this, in this exhibit, the first of which is the viewpoint someone standing on the balcony would have to the neighboring single-family residential property to the south. Another item being shown is the height of screen trees. As mentioned, there's the height of trees at planting, which is the shaded trees that are shown at the bottom, as well as the projected height of trees after 15 years of growth. Along with that, we can also see that there is the carport roofing that would be shielding view into neighboring properties as well. And here we have the proposed building rendering for the site. This viewpoint would be heading south on Mission Avenue, looking at the proposed building The Arden Arcade Community Planning Advisory Council, met on January 25, 2024, and recommends the planning commission approve with the vote of four yes, two no, one absent, the requested entitlements with the requests that are provided on screen at the slide there. There have been responses to individual requests that were asked for by the CPAC, and those are included as items 15 and 16 of your staff report, which is the staff report dated for June 10. If requested, though, staff can, can go through each individual item one by one if needed. Additionally, attachment 10 of your packets will also contain additional materials that were included to address some of those points as well. The Design Review Advisory Councilor Drack, met on January 11, 2024, and recommends the planning commission find the project in substantial compliance with design guidelines. As previously mentioned, it looks like, yeah, okay, cool, it looks like those were already removed? Oh, I see, okay, I guess it works out. There were some changes made to this PowerPoint to reflect some of the items that were requested that staff looked at for this hearing. It looks like the PowerPoint that's being presented is for the June 10 meeting and not the one for the August 26 meeting. I was gonna skip over some of those slides in essence of sign of time, given that the exhibits that would be presented have already been discussed in the previous project. Staff has determined that the proposed project is a qualified housing development for the Affordable Housing Incentive Program, which makes it eligible for 50% density bonus, three incentives, and unlimited waivers, although the project is eligible for these three incentives only toward being requested. The project can be found consistent with the general plan, community plan, the Mission Oaks MPA, and the zoning code. The project will create new housing opportunities to meet the county, the county's diverse housing needs, and similarly, a notice of exemption was prepared for this project indicating that there are no significant environmental concerns. As well as previously mentioned, the project was supported by Drack and CPAC. Therefore, Planning and Environmental Review staff recommends the planning commission take the following actions: recognize the exempt status of the request under section 2159.25 of the California Environmental Quality Act; approve the development plan review; find the project in substantial compliance with design guidelines; and approve the density bonus, request incentives, concessions, or waivers for qualified housing development, subject to those findings and conditions as well. Once more, I would like to note that we do have Cameron Shu with Site DOT in presence, present to answer any questions relating to traffic for the site as well. I'll conclude my presentation, and I believe, similar to the previous project, we do have the applicant team available, and they have prepared a presentation if you guys would like to hear that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Balthazar. Questions for staff this evening?
Are questions for staff this evening? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, we'll invite the applicant up.
Commissioners, my presentation is very consistent with my past one, so I'd be happy to keep it very brief, though I will say Christian was very comprehensive, and it is somewhat redundant with what he just spoke to, but I'll get straight to the diagrams So Christian spoke to this waiver already. This is in regards to the required 75-foot setback for a three-story project adjacent to low-density residential uses. As spoken to prior, the project is about 56, 57 feet setback. There's a portion of the building that does not comply, and that would be the removal and impact to the project in terms of a loss of units were to not receive this waiver. This goes back to the vehicle overhang and the requested, excuse me, landscaping adjacent to the property line, and again, the implications for this are actually would reverberate and cause the drive aisle to actually shift, and therefore cause the building footprint to be shifted as well. So the project requests this waiver as it proposes the design. This waiver is, again, reflective of the total required parking per code and the implications to the project as designed were it to attempt to comply. You can see where the additional parking impacts the building footprint and also completely obliterates the shared courtyard that is really the core amenity and communal space for the project. That's why we request a waiver as designed from this standard. And again, this one does interrelate a little bit with waiver number two. The requirement is the continuous planter of seven feet along the property line, and because of our conflict with the vehicle overhang, we do not comply with this standard, so we request a waiver from this standard as well. And again, this diagram did not render as intended. The required parking and required open space are meant to be reflected as restrictions upon the buildable area. And again, when we considered early design for the project and we were considering how to achieve the density provided by density bonus law, we considered increasing the height of the building but chose not to take that route, and this, again, is just reflective of the actual buildable area that the project would have were it to comply with all of these different development standards. And again, our lovely waiver render, this shows the project fronting the street nicely on Mission Avenue. You see good eyes on the street, which actually improve the security of the surrounding neighborhood, not just the immediate users as well. What's not present on this render, again, is that it was intentional in placing the drive aisle between the existing residential uses and the proposed project in order to create as much of a buffer as possible from the single-family use to the south, and I'm happy to answer any questions as I can as well.
Thank you, Mr. Belds. Questions for the applicant team? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, we are going to move on to public comment. I know we lost a few folks between this item and that, so if they're not here, and they're your neighbor, and you know they're not here, just let me know. First up, we're going to have Charles Lunkley. Next up, we got Kenneth Griffin. On deck, we'll have Joanne Gallardi.
Good evening. I'd like to thank you guys for all your time, as I would like to thank all of these folks for all of their time, because there's quite a bit of time that's been put into this. There's been over 700 signatures between both projects that have signed off in opposition against this. And as we all know, with new legislation, there's always some casualties. I guess we could be the casualties. Hopefully, that doesn't happen. Financial feasibility. It's amazing, this developer has been pointed out to be very robust, and yet it's not financially feasible to put masonry walls in, when I have a new home of 15 years that the fences only lasted 12 years before they were rotting out. Noise is a very big, I actually own the property on the west side that backs up to this, and for, I had a previous tentative map that is currently, right now, under a map extension, and four of these lots will be heavily severely impacted with shade, noise, and walls that eventually are going to start falling down. I'm not sure how many people are real neighborly with their apartment complexes, but, you know, when you work your tail off to accumulate a property, that's your sanctuary, that's your home, that's your backyard. Four of those backyards got to listen to all this noise. And by the way, the applicant pointed out about planting trees. Have they told you there's a 24-inch storm drain in that same planter?
Can you make your closing comments, please?
That's all I have at this moment. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Joanne, you're up, and I've got Curtis Kaufman on deck.
Hi there, thanks once again for your time tonight. Without being redundant, I'd just like to state very quickly, I'm opposed to the project because of the following reasons mentioned: the three-story structure, lack of parking, and the safety to our children with the increased street traffic. Wood fencing around the project is not the best sound barrier for noise reduction. The assertion that it keeps the residents in touch with the community, I think the architect said that, is almost laughable. A masonry wall would be ideal. Wood fencing is a cheap solution. They also said that the owner has done many projects in the area, but I don't believe they live in this area. So it's okay for our backyard to place something like this in it, but not for them. So for those reasons and more, I'm totally opposed to this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gallardi. Curtis Kaufman, and on deck, David Cousins.
Thank you and good evening. I live approximately 250 yards from this property to the west. Your planners did not mention anything to the west, but this project is in fault design so that all of the noise from the property through the open corridors that they have on all three levels will come directly west. They note that there's a common area, it's on the west side of the property. All the traffic comes from east to west. My backyard, my neighborhood, is going to be no place to live when this project's done. Number two, this project has 48 units and 89 bedrooms, and they want to cut their parking requirements? That's just crazy. Okay, I'm in the real estate industry, and the number-one killer of any project is lack of parking. Last but not least, the finished floor level for this project is on the plans at 93.67 feet. The grade at the street level, the top of pavement, average between the north and the south area is about 90 feet. The plans on the website show that the top of the ceiling roof joist, excuse me, is 39.2 feet. So it's going to be about 44 feet above the street level. That's a huge impact on shading and everything else. There's plenty in the design here to deny this project. Noise is the biggest one. Traffic onsite and offsite is number two. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. I got Laney Anderson on deck. And David, you're up.
It's mine. Oh, thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your patience in hearing this testimony. I will start with one of the exhibits that I saw, both in the county presentation and in the developer's presentation. It is the rendering of this idyllic scene of a few cars and a bicyclist. I would like to know if the traffic study would provide, as a cross-section, two buses coming at the same time, filling the right-of-way or the paved surface of the street, plus bicycle lanes on both sides of the street, plus curbed gutters and sidewalk. I think that rendering was misleading, because you're not going to have a bicycle in a traffic lane, which is filled with traffic or buses, and I don't think the state law that requires motor vehicles, particularly buses, to stay three feet or five feet away from the bicyclist can even be met. So I hope someone has considered that cross-section, and that rendering, which is unrealistic, misleading. I'll mention one more thing about the county staff at the June 10 meeting, and by the way, why are the exhibits used for a June 10 meeting when I think there's been substantial information generated by the testimony, and why aren't they updated to reflect all the testimony that came back in June? And it's maybe cheap, quick, and easy to use June 10 exhibits, but they should have been dated with the changes that we have discussed and addressed those for August 26, which is tonight's meeting. Two more things, quickly, I have very little time. I believe there are constitutional issues at the United States constitutional level about takings clause, due process, and the Fifth Amendment, because private property cannot be acquired with government action to the detriment of adjacent property owners. When I did the calculation in the spring, it's millions of dollars. Does the state want to pay that? Does the county want to pay that to the property owners? Our property values are decreasing because of this project.
Thank you, Mr. Belds.
It's in the real world. Lastly, there is a due process and equal protection issue.
Thank you, Mr. Cousins.
Because county staff are not required to swear that telling the truth.
Got it. Just a little clarification before we go on on the presentation from staff this evening. I had requested the June 10 presentation tonight, because we had seen the updates in the first round. Next up, we've got Laney Anderson.
Hi, thank you again for your time tonight. I think I really might have something with this major transit stop. I don't think it has to do with funding, but as a standard, when we're looking at high-density, low-low-income bonus law, and I think that might speak to the health and safety aspect of it, if that's not in place. Route 82 does not support the public transportation infrastructure that is necessary, like I said. And Route 82 also, I didn't get to say before, but when the colleges aren't in session, they actually reduce the bus stops, making it even more lack of public transportation. I'd also like to add that I sit on the Transportation Commission for the City of Roseville, and we take our transit, public transit, very seriously. And we aim to move people to where they need to work, to where they need to buy their groceries, and we like to do it in a humane and dignified way. And without this, and putting a low-low-income density housing project without infrastructure necessary for them to remain dignified and humane and get to where they need to go, I think that there's got to be a law there, and I'm requesting the commission or legal staff to maybe be able to look into that. I feel like staff kind of were looking at their phones and trying to find the answer, and I think that maybe there's something we need to look in and make sure that this can be supported. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I've got Nancy Marquesky, and on deck, I've got Robert Sanchez. I think I'm finally going to get your last name right, too. Did I do better this time?
Very good. Nancy Marquesky, thank you. Forty-five years in our home, you've heard all about our neighborhood. It seems like public safety, traffic, transportation is huge. Help us. Deny this. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Sanchez, you're up. Kathy Sanchez, you're on deck.
I did want to point out that there's been a fatality at Eastern and Whitney, two fatalities. I've been in an accident myself at that intersection, and a neighbor of mine has also been in an accident on that intersection, and the traffic that would be created at these new condominiums would increase traffic and probably increase accidents. I'd like to read this. A mayor statement on SB 9 defeat. "On behalf of the City of Huntington Beach, I want to congratulate the City of Redondo Beach for winning its court case against the State of California, challenging the constitutionality of SB 9 passed into law in 2021. SB 9 is a state-mandated lot-splitting scheme that seeks to densify our precious neighborhoods, sidestepping our regular, single-family zoning, which protects the health and safety of the communities we live in. I applaud Redondo Beach for having the courage to stand up to Sacramento's overreach on housing. Redondo Beach is an example of two other cities that the fight is worth having, and we can win." City Attorney Michael Gates also congratulated the City of Redondo Beach. "This is a great win for the charter cities and local control. In the court decision, it cited the very same authorities that the City of Huntington Beach is relying on in our legal challenges over the home-rule doctrine with the state, Article 11, Section 5 of the California Constitution. The court held today that SB 9 is neither reasonably related to ensuring access to affordable housing nor narrowly tailored to avoid unnecessary interference in local governance. SB 9 is therefore unconstitutional as a violative of the home-rule doctrine. SB 9 is therefore invalid as unconstitutional." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Kathy Sanchez. Clyde Reed. Juan Cuvado is on deck.
So it sounds like most of this is going to boil down to privacy and safety, public health, which I'm sure that the organization will be happy to help you guys provide information with. I don't have that to myself, but the whole idea of privacy in our townhome association or any other house around there, coming from, once again, from three stories looking down, that's a lack of privacy, that's a lack of safety for the women and the families that are all in that area. That alone should be enough to stop this at this point in time. There's excellent points made about bus lines, there's no lack of, there's no support for these guys that would be moving into a three-story location right there. And again, too many people in a single location, we've seen that over and over again. I'm not going to denigrate anybody that happens to be living in a certain area, but the more people you pack into a specific area is not healthy for their mental health or for the living conditions. And you guys are going to be the ones that are going to be supporting them, and you're going to be representing them, so you need to make sure that you guys are representing the future people that are going to be living there. Yeah, once again, let's think about the safety and concern of the people that will be living there. You guys are going to be the gatekeepers of these future homeowners. And that's about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Mr. Cuvado, are you still here? Juan Cuvado. Amber Villegas. Victoria Swanson. On deck, Jeff Delancey.
Thank you again for your time. I had statements prepared, but after hearing Commissioner Borja talk about data-driven decisions, what really came to my mind was that the studies in regards to the health and safety of the current residents in the area, I don't feel was as detailed as it should have been. A really detailed traffic study should have been conducted. A look at the number of children out at the intersection of Mission and Whitney at the close of school every day should have been observed. I can tell you, I live half a mile from this proposed development. I avoid that intersection like the plague if it's anywhere between 1:00 and 3:30 in the afternoon. There are a massive number of children waiting for buses, waiting for pickup. There are a massive number of children waiting for buses, waiting for pickup. They're in the crosswalks, they're not paying attention to traffic. You know, maybe the number of reported accidents doesn't meet transportation's requirements for additional traffic safety, but how many fender benders or minor incidents occur that aren't reported to the police or the sheriff's department? If it's, you know, somebody's bumped your bumper, are you going to call the cops? Probably not, because they're not going to show up. You know, what bothers me about this project is these exceptions are being requested to reduce the living conditions of our low-income needs. Why do they deserve less than what the requirements are for somebody who's paying full price? If a development can't meet the basic zoning requirements, maybe the site isn't suitable for a project of this scale. I'm in support of infill development, including affordable housing, but it should not come at the expense of our community's standards, our quality of life. Exceptions to zoning laws should be granted sparingly and only when they truly benefit the entire community, not just the developer. I urge you to consider these points carefully and uphold the zoning laws that are set in place to protect and enhance our community and are vital to maintaining the order, safety, and quality of life for our neighborhoods.
Thank you, Ms. Swanson. Jeff Delancey. Izzy Delancey. Mundo Velez, you're on deck.
So I wanted to ask a question because I remember, I can't see that far. The gentleman to the right. Not the attorney. Councilman. Okay, there you are. Yes. When you made a comment or a statement about what you were hearing, I thought that was pretty deep. And I thought to myself, was I hearing the same thing? Us, we, don't want it, that? To some degree, it was. But I think if you look deeper, it was more about safety, the children, the neighborhood, the woman back here who's put her property on the market. The two ladies that were here last June 10th, they finally left. They had three offers, they fell out. They had to take a lot less for their house, but they wanted out of California. I really urge all of you, and I really appreciate you all, because I really feel that you guys are listening, but I hate to think that the state makes you guys feel like you're puppets because you can't do anything. Why have a planning commission? I really respect all of you, and I hope at the local level, we get to be heard. Thank you so very much, all of you.
Thank you. Mundo, you are up, and I have David Higbee on deck. I have Kristin Miller on deck.
I wanted to complete my initial statement, but I changed my mind. I'm going to address something else. Every time you want to make a motion for or against the project, you want to ask the staff recommendation. The staff at all times had acted with a proclivity type of behavior towards this project, not in favor of the people, not in favor of us. So how about you asking those who are affected the recommendation for or against this project? We are the ones who had to live with it. Take us in consideration, too. Don't vote for this project.
Thank you. Kristin Miller. Linda Mercado. Kathy Howard. Robert Saunders. Linda Mitchell. Jean Stripling. Paul Cummins. Kathy Cook. On deck, Karen Jacobson.
First of all, I want to thank you for the courage that you guys are showing in listening to us. We appreciate you. You are the only ones that we have to be able to address this project. So you are our representatives against state overreach at this point. And I want to address a couple of things that you're talking about. First of all, the traffic and the significance to our children, our schoolchildren's public safety, it is paramount. And I was there just today when school was letting out. It's a zoo, and those 12, 13, 14-year-olds, their parents aren't right there telling them to look both ways, to cross the crosswalk. They're walking between cars, they're running across, they're talking on their telephones, they're not paying attention, and it's up to the drivers to watch out for the kids. It really was chaos today, and it's like that pretty much every day from about 1:30 in the afternoon till about 3:30 in the afternoon. And I don't think that's when they were doing their traffic studies. Secondly, if you are going to make a decision based on that traffic, you have to think about weighing and going on the conservative side, that yes, there is traffic, there is going to be increased traffic, and don't put those children at risk. If you, if you're weighing in balance and you can't decide, you have to decide conservatively for the safety of the children. There's also two parks that are in that area, after-school activities, Mission Oaks Park and Recreation District, Gibbons Park and Mission Avenue North. Lots of kids on bicycles, skateboards, scooters, and the increased traffic has to cause a higher chance of an accident. So public safety is extremely important in this case. I know a lot of people have left, but I'm represent, I'm their president, I represent them, and I know that they are just as strongly opposed to this project as they are to the other project. Thank you.
Thank you. You have more time as the motor rep, too, if you have anything else to add. We didn't reset your clock there, but.
I'm fine. Thank you.
Perfect. Thanks, Ms. Cook. Karen Jacobson.
I just want to step up here. As Ms. Cook indicated, many of our neighbors who are a little older, they had to leave. But again, this project is equally important to talk about the health and safety. And I do believe that sometimes neighbors and community members may sound a little whiny, a little frustrated. And having lived in this neighborhood, this is a neighborhood of people that care. It's a community that wants our neighborhood to be safe. We want it to be somewhere where people can have a positive life, where there's not the problems with accidents. And again, as I mentioned, there's five schools in the area, and there are lots of kids in this area. So again, from noise pollution, light pollution, traffic accidents, and I do concur, if anyone's been, lived near any elementary school or middle school, there are an extreme amount of traffic all the time. This is just not the right project, and the health and safety concerns, the adverse impacts, are so significant. And you guys are obviously making tough decisions, and we appreciate your volunteer time. We appreciate the staff looking at everything. But again, when you look closely at this, we ask you to stay as you did with the last decision and deny this project. Thank you on behalf of all of us in this neighborhood.
Thank you. Any other speakers this evening before I close the public hearing? All right. Thank you all. At this time, I'd like to give the applicant the opportunity to address anything that came out in public hearing you'd like to.
Thank you very much for the chance to speak again. I'll try to keep this brief, but there have been a couple of points now in both of the public comment sessions that I thought maybe would be good to address and partially just to sort of clarify for everyone. So there's been a lot of conversation about a requirement for subsidized affordable housing projects to have a proximity to a, what's called a high-quality transit stop, which has to do with, I think it's actually 20-minute headways, or at least it was when the law was written. The nature of that law is contained within SB 330, which is a streamlining law, but it's buried within that. And actually, the, that section of the law is written in the sense that an affordable housing project benefits from additional parking requirement reductions when within a half-mile of a high-quality transit stop. And that actually reduces the parking requirement to .5 spaces per unit, not including guest parking. So I don't believe that's relevant for this project whatsoever. We're not within a high-quality transit stop, and we agree with that in the official technical definition, but we're also not asking for parking below .5 per unit either. In regards, there were a couple of comments about how the project should be senior affordable housing and how the AMI levels have changed throughout the CPAC process. I'll speak to both of those combined. The project did originally propose providing units at 80% AMI, and I believe the total affordable housing count between both projects, I believe, was 15 units. I believe it was nine for this unit, for this project in question that we're speaking about. However, SHRA refused to provide a rent schedule for 80% AMI units and basically forced us into 50% AMI units. And so that's why the unit count changed, is because we went from more of a moderate income level to a very low income level, and that's also why the count changed. And we also got guidance from SHRA during our discussions with them that we could not make this project a senior project. I'll be frank, I didn't press them or threaten them that we felt so strongly that we needed to, but that was direct instruction from SHRA. They told us it would violate for housing law. There's also been a lot of discussion about SB 9. SB 9 has no relevance to this project either. SB 9 has to do with single-family zoned lots. As we've discussed, this lot is zoned RD 20. I just want to say that I'm a born-and-bred Sacramento, and there are about 400 housing units being built within half a mile of my home, and I'm excited about that. Sacramento is a growing community. All corners of our region, even outside of our county, are growing. Frankly, it's exploding. I think anyone who's lived here for a period of time knows that, but we can't just put up walls and not provide housing. Now, speaking to this particular location, again, these parcels have been zoned for three-story multifamily development for 40-plus years. Additionally, this section of Mission Avenue is essentially a small little cluster of commercial and multifamily activity. It is the logical place to put housing within the broader community. More specifically, as many of the folks have spoken to during public comment, this is a great place to live. This is an excellent place to put families. Proximity to schools is not a reason to not provide housing. I went to Southern Middle School, which is at Alhambra and I Streets, tons of development, very active context, excellent school. I had the good fortune of being able to walk to work. To me, I'm pretty confused by the argument that good schools or existence of schools is a rationale to not provide housing. That does not compute for me. I just thought I'd share that concern. I think that that's actually backwards. If they're good schools, that's where the housing should be going, particularly a project like this that has some units that will allow for families, particularly young families. Not everyone can afford a home. I think most importantly, I would just speak to the fact that these projects would generally benefit the region. As I said, this is a good location for housing within the broader context of this sort of neighborhood. They would support the local schools, they would be taxpayers, they would be patrons of nearby businesses, they would strive to integrate into a neighborhood, just like all of us do when we move into a new neighborhood. I think it's easy to vilify people. I've heard comments made that we don't want those people, some sort of intimation that people who live in apartments are a different sort of person. I've lived in an apartment in my life as well. I'm fortunate enough to own a home now, but I didn't for many years of my life, and that didn't change who I was. That didn't change how I approached my life. It didn't change my neighbor approach. I was just as friendly and frankly forthcoming with my neighbors when I lived in apartments, and now I do live in my own home, which, by the way, is a three-story townhome. So living in three stories is not always so bad. I really appreciate your consideration of our request for this project. I urge you to please consider supporting this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, that'll move us on to deliberation. So I can kick us off, I think, now that I've had a little more time to think from the first one and our deliberations. As I struggled with the first one, I had a hard time making a motion to deny with specific findings, but I had an easier approach of not approving and voting against not approving this project with the unlimited waivers. I think it does come down to, to me, I've talked about it from this dais many times, of state law is driving us toward two extremes of housing that I don't love. It's driving us to RD 30 and RD 40 and single-family homes. And so taking a site that's been zoned RD 20 and essentially making it RD 30 does move us in that direction. And then I see state law giving us a weird mix of throw in a few affordable units, and then you can use these waivers to make the market rate units more palatable, right? So we can increase, you know, the rents of the market rate units because we're giving the courtyard, or we're giving the garden, or we're giving, you know, other design considerations that the applicant would want to have for market rate units. And we're, if we were to approve this, it basically says that that's an okay use of the affordable housing law. So my, I'll state it again, my main concern is with just opening the door to unlimited waivers and what that does, not only to these projects, but to future projects, and its interplay with how it's not a 100% affordable project. It is really this mix of affordable projects that waivers are being used on. So I do think it's, at the end of the day, it's our elected representatives' decision to fight bad state law or overreach. Glad I'm not in that hot seat, so that will really be up to them. But I think I wanted to really make it clear on why I can't support to approve the project, but also why I would struggle to make the case to deny the project with specific health and safety recommendations. So I think that is going to fall to the neighborhood in order to try to make that distinction clear to the supervisors, what specific, you know, health and safety concerns there are that are there, because this is going to go to the next fight.
That wasn't a motion, or there was a motion?
That was not a motion. That was me just, because I'm not going to make a motion to approve, or make a motion for staff recommendation, and I also can't really make a motion to deny based on the limited grounds that I've been given. So I will entertain a motion.
Can we substitute roll call with the previous vote?
No, we're going to, we're going to vote again, but the trick here is that if there's going to be a motion to deny, and there's a second, I mean, until we know, I don't know if you guys are going to vote the exact same way, but we are at least going to need to know for those moving to deny, what the findings are going to be. What are, what is the quantifiable impact? What's the standard? Is it traffic? Is it safety? Is it noise? What is it? Are you, is it, are you focused on a waiver? Which particular waiver? Are you focused on a concession or an incentive? Because those are the things that you have to focus on in denying the project. Those are the elements that you can deny.
I'm not going to make a motion to deny. I'm just not going to vote to approve the project, so I'm fine with that approach. But I'll state clearly for the record, my vote is coming from the fact that I can't approve a project with unlimited waivers.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the staff recommendation.
We have a motion for staff recommendation. Do we have a second?
I will second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for staff recommendation. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Borja.
Before I vote, I just want to be, again, specific as to why I'm voting. And I appreciate each and every one of you taking the time right now. As Justin mentioned, we're all volunteers here. I have a... I have a four-week-old at home that I can't wait to go see home. I also feel for you all to have children and have family members. I also want to be in a community where it's safe to live, walk, play, and work. But at this time, I just don't believe that we have that set of quantifiable data, at least that I believe. I would really encourage the community members, the applicants, and the county staff to really try to figure out and work together, or at least meet to some sort of accordance of providing the next decision-making body, which would be the Board of Supervisors, with the specific information that you can hopefully advocate for yourselves or your community members one way or another as to why this project would be a benefit or detrimental to the community. And I do hear the voice of the community members here. Emotions can run very high because this is a place that you live and breathe in and you call home. I think I would be in the same place as you would be are, but I would just really encourage you folks to just really look at information that can help really provide the overall picture of the environment, whether it is the amount of kids during high-peak traffic hours, whether it's just looking at, you know, the prevalence or the timing stops of the traffic lights in that corridor, whether it's just the number of population of the folks south of the neighborhood during worshiping hours. I mean, those are the kinds of things that I think would be worth a discussion during the next decision-making body and also would be considered by, you know, higher courts as they consider cases like this. So with that, again, I seconded the staff motion, but I just want to make that clear. Thank you.
I think you're voting at this point, not seconding.
I did, I did, yeah. I voted yes.
And we'll move to Commissioner Conklin. And Commissioner Raitel.
No.
Okay. And again, the mission.
I mean, technically, that's not a tie, so effective denial unless there's a motion to reconsider.
I'm so sorry. My colleague, Commissioner Devlin, wasn't called. Well, he was the one who made the motion.
Oh, yeah, he was. The one that made the motion. So I'm sorry, Commissioner Devlin.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I assumed. I apologize.
Two-on-one.
Yep.
All right. Any motions to reconsider?
So that will require an appeal, a second appeal.
All right. That concludes item number two. We'll move on to the planning director's report.[1716.11][1716.11](applause)
Good evening, Commissioners. Todd Smith, Planning Director. Very brief report tonight. Just want to remind folks that we do have three items on the next agenda, September 9th. One of those is one of the Jackson Highway master plans. It's a hearing on the draft EIR, not on the merits of the project. So I'd be interested to know attendance anticipated, or maybe perhaps expected absences.
And that'll be on September 9th.
I will be here. Sounds like we'll have at least four. All right. Anything else? Planning Director's report?
No.
Perfect. Miscellaneous scheduling items. Generic public comments, item five?
None.
All right. Thank you all for your time tonight and your work on these projects. Really appreciate you all.
Thank you.